Okay, I have unmuted myself now. Moving on, just a reminder to council members that for our oral communications, we still have just two minutes each. And just to further clarify, I will be during clarifying questions and discussions of motions, I will be calling on each one of you individually, and I will be rotating. And hopefully through that method, there won't be any need for you to raise your hand because you will be called upon. The other thing is, I've been asked to move 10B ahead of 10A, and unless there's any objections, I will do that. 10A, 10B will come ahead of 10A. And so that will start with roll call. Captain Gomez. Estrada. Gonzalez.
Present.
Hernandez. First.
Right here.
Parker.
Here.
Garcia. Here. Okay, it's now time for the pledge of allegiance. Trina, could you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Moving on, we have informational items, a report of dispersments, miscellaneous documents, written by, written reports by council members, but I didn't see any today, so I don't think there's any. Going on, we'll go to presentation and oral communications. This is the time. Lowell, you needed to say something?
Well, I had a question about dispersments, if I might.
Oh, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just want to be able to prove to the public that I read the whole packet, all 749 pages of it.
Why don't you explain to them what dispersments is?
Just dispersments are checks that the city writes.
Right.
And so I noticed that we had a couple of checks to the LAFCO, and on page eight and page 13, there are two checks written to LAFCO, each one of them for $41,210.05. I wanted to make sure, and I should have asked this question to staff earlier, but I didn't have time. I wanted to make sure that we weren't writing a duplicate check. Or do we, or is it for two years? Or it seems odd that there's two checks in different check numbers for the same amount. Perhaps we can get some clarification on that.
And Mayor and Council, I believe we have Cindy Sirwan, our Finance Director, on the meeting, as well as Susie Maryam, our Community Development Director. Perhaps one of them can provide more detail.
I know, I know LAFCO does a lot for us, and they do expect a lot. And so I just want to make sure that we're paying the right amount.
Hi, can you guys hear me? This is Cindy.
Yes, Cindy.
Hi, hi Lowell. So our, our system actually is designed to not allow us to pay the same invoice twice. We have controls in place that checks the date and invoice numbers. So without looking at the details of this circumstance, I'm imagining it's not a double payment. Often for organizations that we're a part of, they take up an annual amount to divide it into four equal parts. So, but I'm happy to look into this very specific incident and get back to you, you know, later today or tomorrow. But I'm, our system wouldn't actually allow that. But I can give you further follow up.
Certainly no rush on my part, and I just want to make sure that we're doing our part for LAFCO. And that they do their part for us, too. Thank you.
Thank you Lowell for asking that question. Okay, moving on. This is time now for oral communications from the public, and the public does have three minutes to speak. You will be recognized by raising your hand. So you're on. Raise your hand, and you'll be recognized by Irwin. Irwin, is there nobody there?
Um, Mayor, yes, there is people, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna aloud.
Nancy.
Ellie has been given the right to speak. Ellie, if you'll mute yourself, you're able to speak now. Ari, lie. Okay.
Is there a space where we're gonna see our time limit?
Yes.
Let me know when to begin.
Go ahead.
Oh, I thought I was waiting for the timer.
The timer's on.
Oh, okay, well, will I have access to it to see how much time I have left while I'm speaking? That's what I'm asking. I'm guessing not. Awesome. Okay, can we restart it? I haven't started speaking. Okay, so this is exhausting. I don't feel comfortable or safe to disclose my first and last name and address in order to participate in these meetings. I think my name and my district should suffice, which is what we've used before. My name is Elizabeth, and I'm District Seven. Ari Parker is my council member. Asking people that they have to start their video cameras in order to participate. I've also told you before, people with anxiety do not want to do that. I am a person with anxiety. I do not want to show my face. The clock has stopped. I don't know if that means I could talk forever, because I would. I think that the way that you set up the Zoom call today is further even more divisive to the community. Now, not only can I not participate in the chat, which I've so desperately reached out to Matt and several council members about, now I can't even see my community. I can't see who's here. You are dividing us furthermore. In your agenda, it says, working with our community to create positive impact through service with heart. I do not see how this is doing that. I can't see not one person here from my community. How can I connect with them? How can we grow as a community? How can we create real change if you are keeping us separate? It's just, it's so exhausting to come here and want to participate and want to be a part of our community and dealing with a city manager that just ignores all of our emails and just responds one time, responds with the same copied email to every single person, like we're trying to, to get engaged. We're trying to learn the system that you guys are running, and you guys just want to keep us out every which way you can. As soon as I'm done being a panelist, I can't have even access to my own city council members responding to what I'm saying. It's just, you're silencing our community. You are not creating opportunity through diversity. You are not unifying us through cooperation. You are doing the exact opposite. And Matt, I placed a lot of this on you, because as a city manager, you try to convey this idea that you're doing the most that you can, but every time I try to press you to do just a little bit more, you stand behind that red tape and you tell me no. And council members, if you are agreeing with me and you send me emails telling me that you agree with what I'm asking Matt to do to provide for our community, then I ask you to also do it here in person. Like, who keeps Matt accountable? You're trying to keep us accountable by getting our names, our addresses, our faces. Who keeps him accountable and not responding to emails and not creating real change and not keeping our campesinos safe? I've seen the campesinos on the buses. They are not being kept safe. I've seen the campesinos with the smoke. They are not being kept safe. Working with Campesino caravan is not enough. That just gives you brownie points. I want to see real change. Making this into a webinar where we can't do or communicate or say anything is not real change. Like, I don't understand how you think that you're creating a community. Are you truly creating a community for us, or are you creating a Watsonville that works for you? Because what it feels like is you will only work with people that will cooperate with you, that will do what you say, that will stand by your line. And that's not how we achieve growth. That's not how we achieve change. And it's so disappointing. I have to amp myself up to come to these meetings, because I know I'm gonna get stressed out listening to you guys, because you do not take us seriously. It's disheartening. It's a terrible thing that you're doing to our community, and I demand change.
Thank you for your comments, Elizabeth. Okay, next.
Nancy Billisich.
Go to bed, Kirby. Kirby, go to bed. Kirby, Kirby goes to bed.
You may speak now, Nancy.
Oh, great. I'm sorry. I just wanted to, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Paharo River Flood Risk Reduction Finance and Governance Committee. We had a meeting, I don't remember if it was last week or two weeks ago. Ari was there, Aurelio was there. And we're getting to the point where we have the money from the federal government. We have money from the Department of Water Resources for the state government. And now we're getting to the match that we need from our community. And what that amount is going to be, is going to be, well, we're still deciding. We don't know yet. But the figures seem high, and I think we will all try and negotiate to make it better for our community. It's only for the people that vote that are in the flood zone area, not the whole community, because they say that the benefit is only from the people in the area. So I just wanted to let you know that we continue to work on this. Matt was there, too. I mean, it's gonna take a while, and it's gonna, it's a big, it's a big task to try and get community, not community support. I think everybody supports it, but trying to find the monetary money to make it happen is going to be a challenge. But I wanted to let you know that we are still meeting, and we're still working on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, for continuing your service for us. Okay, next.
Ray, your turn is next. Please unmute and may speak.
Could you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council members. I hope you and your families are all doing well and safe during these times. You should all have received an email I sent you a few weeks ago, also expressing to you my frustration with the city manager and the Community Development Department. And I'm actually gonna echo some of what the first speaker mentioned about lack of turning emails and lack of communication. And I wanted to follow up and just make some statements to that email that I sent that. For the record, I do feel that, in my opinion, Matt is not competent or the right city manager for our city. The fact that he allows a racist Community Development Director to remain employed earning a six-figure income just baffles me. I look at it and see, how could we be leading as a community and as a city when you have a city manager who could care less of what goes on, allows his staff to do what they want? It seems like it's the blind leading the blind there. And he comes from SoCal, comes in, collects his check, goes and spends his check in Santa Cruz. And, and really, there's probably over 100 emails that I sent Matt, asking for him for help. And not once did he reply back until after I sent you all the email that I did send you. Watsonville, unfortunately, when other communities around us, Santa Cruz, Capitola, Aptos, Gilroy, have progressed, we have progressed, and I think it's because of the lack of leadership that we have for Matt. It seems to me that this is just a way for Matt to pad his resume for his next job. I mean, knowing that he had a city manager role for our city. I mean, it's just, it's unfortunate what's gone on with our city for a few years there when I thought that we were actually on the upswing and things were looking positive. We have regressed. With Matt at the helm, there hasn't been any new market rate housing, no, no new jobs created, no companies coming in, commercial, commercial vacancies are rising, the overall revenue is lower. Again, it just seems because of the lack of them living here, they, they don't care what goes on. And I implore you to really track where we're spending the six-figure salaries that we're paying him and the racist Community Development Director, and see if we're getting our monies worth by what we're paying them. I don't feel that if they, if they haven't brought any jobs or any revenue to at least match what they're earning, they should not be employed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray, for sharing your thoughts with us. Next.
Ferny, you are next. Please unmute yourself and speak.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, pretty.
Okay. Okay, well, hello, good evening, council members. I hope you guys are all doing well amidst this pandemic. But honestly, truthfully, what, what are you guys doing? Literally, like, what, what's going on? The community has been, has been telling us this for like, the past, I don't know how long. And it's like, um, I'm gonna repeat some of the words that the first speaker said and what the speaker that just talked, just said. Were there reparations for the farmworkers? I mean, there's been so much community help for those who have came from North County. But what about our community? What are you guys doing to ensure that the campesinos are actually being protected during these wildfires? I mean, where, where are the reparations for them? And what, as a community, well, not even just as a community, but you guys, what are you guys doing to protect them as well? I mean, it kind of seems like Matt and the racist director that are making these six-figure salaries really don't care about what's going on in Watsonville, and we've seen it. We've seen, we've seen everything that's going on in Watsonville. Watsonville is not progressing as other communities that we see, like Santa Cruz, Aptos, Capitola. In fact, we are degressing or regressing, sorry, like what the former speaker just said. And the community has been asking you guys for, the community just wants answers, and you guys are not willing to give it to us. And so that is why you are getting a lot of people on here mad. And honestly, like, I'm not, I'm not blaming them, because honestly, I'm pretty pissed off, too. So do a better job, be better. That's all.
Thank you, Ferny, for your words. Next.
Rosa Noriega, please unmute yourself, and you are now ready to speak.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes, Rosa.
Okay. I want to echo what has been said by Ellie and previous other people. There is no reason for which you all have disabled the chat options. There should not be a requirement for people to submit a public comment. As Ellie said, people have anxiety, and this makes it difficult for some people to speak up, right? In addition to urging you all to enable the chat feature and stop being gatekeepers, I would like to urge you all to do something for our farmworkers. I know damn well that everyone on this board thrives off of the fruits and labors and labor of our farmworkers. So I ask you all the following. What have you all done to ensure their safety during these times? City Council, I sent you all an email about a week ago, and I mean, I have yet to receive a response. So let me go ahead and read some of it right here. I'm aware of the fact that you all have worked with community organizations to get masks out to our farmworkers, but I would also like to, to express the fact that it should not take a global pandemic and a surge in wildfires in our city to get our farmworkers the proper mask that they need to work during these times. This is something that was long overdue, and it invariably highlights how incompetent our city council is. You all should have had these supplies distributed six months ago. I want to urge you all to come to the understanding that Watsonville is an agricultural site. Our economy thrives on the labor of farmworkers, yet our city does absolutely nothing to create an emergency fund for our essential workers. I ask that on top of working with community partners to get folks the materials needed to work in these conditions, you all begin to center the needs of our farmworkers and come up with the financial safety net so that when incidents like these occur, our farmworkers do not have to fear for their economic stability. So like I said, I sent this about a week ago. Where's my response? What are you all doing? What's going on? Matt, what is going on? Turn on the chat features. Let us talk to each other and organize. Should I make it more clear? Matt, do you want to talk to me on a personal level? Do you want my phone number? Let me know, Matt. Let me know. I emailed you. My name is Rosa Noriega Rocha. Let me know what's up.
Thank you, Rosa, for your words. Moving on to the next one.
Email me back.
Those are all the speakers wishing to address the council at this time.
There's no more?
No, there's no more.
Okay. Moving on, we'll go to oral communications from the council, and we'll start with Trina.
Mayor, I just want to let know, let everybody know, COPA is having a discussion tomorrow at the First United Methodist Church. So you can take a look at their site for anybody that's interested in joining on that. And again, you know, it's working together for the victims of the fire that are going on, and obviously the COVID situation. And other than that, I'm just gonna go ahead and pass along, because I know that we have a very full agenda for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, and next is Felipe.
You know, first of all, I, there's a few events that I attended. One of them was the Farm Bureau's event, and it was a testicle festival. They had a drive-through event that we attended. A few council members went. We had a ball at the event. It was, you know, well-attended, drive-through event, pickup type event. You know, they, they had it at the same location up there in the Santa Cruz Mountains, up in, was it West Watsonville, up in the Mount Madonna area. You know, I want to thank the Watsonville writers that did a big drive for, for the evacuees, and you know, they collected a lot of donation items for the evacuees, and they turned a lot of them in today. And I want to mention to, I want to mention that for a lot of the businesses and folks that know businesses is that there's an encroachment permit for outdoor dining and display areas that's available for free. And so if you know anyone that's a business owner, either downtown or anywhere in Watsonville, there's a permit to allow them for outdoor dining or outdoor display. It's free, so let them know about it. They can get it at the Community Development, the Planning Department. And next is, you know, I want to welcome Coralito's Coffee House. It's coming into the old Second Street Cafe here in downtown Watsonville. And lastly, I want to make sure that everybody does their census. I know our mayor recently done her census, and I want to make sure everyone does it. And I want to also, you know, make sure that, speaking of the Farm Bureau that I spoke of, is that, you know, we do got to get engaged in, in a collaborative effort with all these different agencies, whether it's the Farm Bureau, Shippers and Growers Association, the County Act Commissioner. And now that we've had, you know, recently, we've had the, the California OES and the Governor Newsom here the other day, maybe engage in a conversation with them about bringing some N95 masks to farmworkers here in, in Watsonville. I know the county of Monterey got about 80 or 75,000 masks for farmworkers over there, but we should do something here in Watsonville, I think. But we do got to engage all our partners, the Farm Bureau, shippers and growers, the County Act Commissioner, the same way that Monterey County did. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Lowell.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. You know, these are unprecedented times. I don't think anybody's been through quite what is going, the community is going through at this time. And so I understand that patience is short, and, and folks are upset about a lot of things. And I'm not happy about everything either. In fact, I don't want to be disrespectful, but I think I broke my finger this last two weeks, although I hate to go to the doctor, because I, nobody wants to go to the doctor either. But I've got it taped up, and hopefully it'll heal. And if it doesn't, well, I'll go around with this for a long time. There is some good news, though. Let's congratulate new parents, first-time parents, Amanda and Paco. Congratulations to you for your new addition to the family, Catalina. So congrats there. I remember how excited I was when I brought my 35-year-old daughter home from the hospital, and she was adopted, and we were, you know, joyous parents. And speaking of my family, my, my son was a cowfire guy for six years after he got out of the Marine Corps. And so our hearts go out to all the cowfire and our staff as well, and we say, stay the course and be safe. And we're gonna get through this, but we're gonna get through this together. And this is not the time for division. We be, need to be unified and working together. And I say that particularly to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lowell. Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all the community that's done all the outreach for the farmworkers, for the COVID people, and for the fire. I think a community is really important that we come together. I just like to acknowledge one thing, that I, I am recovering from COVID. Me and my wife are both recovering, so we understand the seriousness of this. You need to take care of yourselves, wear your masks. But I also want to touch on what was conversed here a little earlier, and piggyback a little bit on what Felipe Hernandez said about Monterey County. And therefore said they're doing, the key word there that he used was Monterey County. The county is the one that's stepping up, because this is a county responsibility. Us as a city can help within our jurisdiction, and, and I think we've been trying to assist as much as we can with a limited budget that we have. But again, a lot of this goes into the OSHA, the farmworkers themselves. But again, it, most of our ag land, as you see it around us, you think it's within our city limits. It's not. It's within the county limits. And so that's come, becomes out of our jurisdictions. But that's something that we really need to pay attention, and we need to push the county to do more for our farmworkers. And as a community, we need to continue to do more for our farmworkers. And I think we have been trying to do the best we can with the limited funding that we have. And it's hard to communicate with folks, and as far as the chat goes, that as a councilman, I do not read chats. I do not communicate with chats, because it's more important to the listeners, the person that's talking than a group of people that is trying to organize where a public meeting is being held. If you want to organize, share your email, share your full name, share your address with each other, communicate with each other, and organize. Then nobody's stopping you from organizing out on your own. You don't need to do it on public time. So with that, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Aurelio. And Ari?
Thank you, Mayor. School has started, and we are three weeks in. And that means three weeks of kids trying to find out their schedules, and if they could make it four hours on the computer. I don't know. We did a full four hours today, and it was tough. So keeping people safe and keeping families so that they can go to work and that their children are still taken care of. These are the worries that I know that I have and a lot of people in our community have. These are the worries uh, that I know that I have and, and a lot of people in our community have. Um, I want to, uh, I want to say I, I love being a part of Watsonville. Because although we've had, it seems like unprecedented craziness, as Councilman Hurst said, uh, over and over again in two thousand twenty, that our community keeps responding in such a positive way. Um, I find it extraordinary that they keep reaching into this resource uh, uh, of who, that, what they have in their lives to bring this out. And so I just wanted to say thank you to all of them. I do what I can, um, but I know that's never enough, as we all feel that way. Um, I do want to touch base with uh, what Dr. Nancy Villasich uh, spoke about, um, which is our Parro, Parro River Finance and Governance Meeting. We're going to have another one this week and um, Councilman Aurelio Gonzalez, myself, uh, City Manager, uh, Matt Hufiker, uh, and uh, Nancy Villasich were there. Uh, I think Felipe, uh, Councilman Felipe Hernandez was a part of that and and we're working very hard to make sure that we can be protected um, within a defined benefit area without unduly I don't know, uh, financial, creating financial hardship for all the people who work so hard in the city of Watsonville. So thank you.
Thank you for your words. Um, and my report is that we did have a break from a city council meetings. However, there was no break from our council obligations. And so I'm just going to list for you all the activities, meetings and conferences that I attended during the past six weeks. In terms of virtual meetings I attended, uh, that I attended, and it included uh, climate action, the adaptation plan, Sacros County Youth Violence Prevention Network, Watsonville Arts Council Subcommittee, the twenty-twenty census and a general community uh, meeting. Events where I spoke included the Cesar Chavez Award Ceremony and the Regeneracion Climate of Hope Summit. The virtual conferences I attended included the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, uh, the National Association of Latino Elected Officials and the Association of Water Education for Latino Leaders. So I have been busy in addition to almost daily uh, answering the many phone calls and emails that I receive. And I'd also love to give you an update in terms of our policing, policing community work. We received twenty applications for the Ad-Hoc Committee. And presently, the staff is reviewing the applications to assure that all qualify for the committee. Then council members Francisco Aurelio and I will select the twelve members to serve on the committee. And as uh, Trina pointed out, tomorrow, August the twenty-sixth, Copa is also having house meetings as I previously mentioned, or was previously mentioned. And tomorrow they will have their first how, uh, Copa House meeting at six thirty P M. And so with that, that concludes my uh, uh, report. Uh, moving on, we're going to have uh, proclamations now. And with our new software, uh, we now have the capacity to allow recipients, uh, say a few words and speak. So after each proclamation, if a representative or the recipient would like to speak, you will uh, be allowed to do that. So the first proclamation I have is um, for Federico Castañeda. And there's about ten whereas's in each one of them, but I'm only going to read a few. Whereas Federico later began working as a migrant counselor and then an academic guidance counselor at Watsonville High School, supporting and encouraging students to follow their dreams. And whereas Federico always prioritized meetings with his students' families by adjusting to their varying schedules and make countless educational parent presentations locally as well as at the state and national level. And whereas Federico, other passion was sports. He played for the Watsonville High Soccer Team for four years and then for the local semi-professional league and later coached the high school girls soccer team. Uh, now therefore, I Rebecca Garcia, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the State of California, on behalf of the city of uh, uh, behalf of the city council hereby recognize Federico Castañeda for his uh, many, uh, many years uh, serving that community. And we pray for him in his passing. Uh, is there anybody that would like to speak regarding Federico's proclamation?
Mayor Miguel Odehle is here. He's the one that was going to receive the proclamation.
Okay, so can Miguel speak now?
Amanda, would you please um, unmute Mr. Odehle?
He, he knows to unmute, so he's already in the meeting. I'm asking him to unmute. Miguel, if you please unmute your uh, mic, you are welcome to speak at this time.
Right. Uh, okay, hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I just want to say thank you on behalf of Federico Castañeda and um, his family, uh, his kids, uh, Eric and Jasmine, um, his sisters. We all know he was a great uh, member of our community. He helped so much, so many people. And we, we miss him. Uh, we lost somebody really good in our community. So thank you so much. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you so much for your words. And I, I do want to say that uh, as you know, Francisco's not here because he just had a baby girl Catalina. But he asked me to uh, please say a few words for him. And he said that he, he has ex- external gratitude to Federico for his mentionship, mentorship, kindness and friendship. Federico has become who he is in part, I mean, uh, Francisco has become who he is in part because of Federico. And so with that, we'll move on to the next proclamation. And this is uh, in part, Women's Suffrage Hundred Anniversary, August the twenty-fifth today. But actually, I think it was signed in the eighteenth, if, if I'm not, yeah, August the eighteenth. So whereas in eighteen sixty-nine, Elizabeth Katie Stanton and Susan B. Anthony founded a new group, the National Women's Suffrage Association to fight for a universal suffrage amendment to the Constitution. And whereas on October eighteenth nineteen twenty, after more than seventy years of struggle, the nineteenth amendment was ratified, giving all American women the same rights and responsibilities of citizenship as men, including the right to vote. And whereas Gail Pellerin has served as the county's primary elections official for twenty-seven years, having been elected to her fourth term in June of two thousand eighteen. And whereas in her position, Gail manages all elections taking place in the county with its office being responsible for voter registration, conducting elections, managing candidate and campaign filings. Now therefore, I Rebecca J. Garcia, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the State of California, on behalf of the city council hereby acknowledge a hundred years of women's suffrage and recognize Santa Cruz County Clerk Gail Pellerin for her invaluable work within her department, especially during all these elections. So Gail, if you're there, uh, do you, do you want to say a few words? Oh, there you are.
Hi, how are you? Yes, I'm honored. Uh, thank you, Mayor Garcia and council members for this amazing honor. I'm humbled to be recognized in a proclamation that includes women's suffrage leaders like Elizabeth Katie Stanton, Lucretia Mott, and Susan B. Anthony. Uh, we have certainly come a long way in a hundred years. But it's also important to note that other women's suffrage leaders like Ida B. Wells and Mary Church Terrell and Dolores Huerta and Mabel Lee did not gain that precious right to vote until decades after the passage of the nineteenth amendment. Today is seventy days until we're going to hold that November third presidential general election. And there are still efforts made to suppress the vote here in our country. That's hard to believe a hundred years, uh, that that's happening here in two thousand twenty. Uh, gratefully, we live in California where we're leading the way for voter enfranchisement. So I want to call on all of you who are here today as either council members or members of the public to be a trusted messenger in your community. Encourage people to register to vote. It's super easy to do online. Remind people to check their information through the voter status lookup tool to make sure we have all the correct information. Uh, tell them how they can easily sign up to track their ballot, just like they do a package. You can track your ballot. And most importantly, to vote. Uh, ballots will be mailed to all voters in the State of California by October fifth. Uh, and with Election Day, we're now calling November third as the last day to, to vote. Uh, ballots can be dropped off at any one of our fifteen ballot drop boxes that will be set up by October sixth. We'll have seventeen in-person voting locations. We're scrambling a little bit because some of those locations are under fire right now and we're having to come up with some alternatives. Um, but uh, and then of course, one of our locations is the Watsonville City Clerk's Office. And I just want to give a shout out to Beatrice Flores, who is just an amazing city clerk and does so much for the people in South County, to ensure that they have access and the right to vote. Um, so I just want to thank you all for this recognition. It's truly a great honor. And I think my daughter's listening, so uh, she's the next generation of women leaders and I'm just very proud and honored to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Gail, for your words. And congratulations to you. Our uh, third, uh, what you're hearing, unfortunately, my uh, gardener is mowing my lawn right now. And that's what you're hearing. I'm sorry. I told him to come earlier, but I guess he couldn't do it. Anyway, our last uh, proclamation goes to Jacob's Heart's Children. We're honoring Jacob's Heart's Children uh, Cancer Support Services and declaring September twenty twenty as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Watsonville. So whereas each year in, one in every two hundred and eighty-five children in our community will be diagnosed with cancer and whereas during the COVID nineteen crisis, Jacob's Heart has been keeping medically fragile children and families housed, fed and emotionally supported by steadfast uh, adhering to the following commitments. One, parents of children with cancer and other serious illnesses will be relieved of financial fears and be able to focus attention to their children. Two, no child undergoing intensive treatment in our community will be homeless. Three, families of seriously ill children will not experience food insecurity during and after the pandemic. And four, no seriously ill child in our community will ever miss a medical appointment because of lack of transportation. Now therefore, I Rebecca J. Garcia, Mayor of the City of Watsonville, hereby declare September the twentieth as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Watsonville and honor Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services for outstanding support to our community and acknowledge the organization's contributions to Child Cancer Awareness Month. Is there anybody from Jacob's Heart that would like to speak? Not hearing any, then we'll uh, move on. Uh, Eddie, report out, uh, out of closed session?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make it short. The uh, council considered uh, all the items on the closed session agenda. This evening, discussed them, received reports from staff, but took no final action. That concludes my report.
Very good. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, city manager's update report.
All right, thank you, council. Give me one moment to share my screen. All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the community. Uh, welcome back after what must have felt like a very short uh, summer break. Uh, to say the least, the last two months have been very busy, um, as crisis stacks on top of crisis. But our employees and our community have really strut, uh, stepped up in a big way. And I appreciate the opportunity uh, this evening to provide an update uh, to you all, um, as we, as we face these challenges together. With the Santa Cruz Lightning Fires activity, it's easy to forget that we are still in the midst of a pandemic. COVID nineteen is still prevalent in our community, so I wanted to start with providing an update on current trends. Throughout the U S, we are now at five point seven five million confirmed cases. Santa Cruz County recorded as of today approximately one thousand six hundred ninety-eight, four hundred and thirty-nine confirmed recovered, seven deaths and eight hundred and ninety-six cases in Watsonville. And unfortunately, Watsonville represents about twenty percent of the county's total population. We continue to see the way this virus is disproportionately impacting our community. And while we had uh, made some ground on reducing the, the total percentage share in Watsonville, it has crept up over the last couple of weeks. And we're now at about fifty-three percent of the total cases in the county. Uh, eighteen-year-olds to thirty-four-year-olds uh, still hold the largest age group. And that's true, not just in Watsonville, but throughout Santa Cruz County. And Latinos make up sixty percent of the, of all cases within Santa Cruz County. That is also true in other parts of the country. Uh, this virus, for many reasons, uh, is impacting uh, our Latino community disproportionately compared to uh, other um, um, other parts of the community. Uh, that's for many reasons. And it's uh, obviously exacerbated by the fact that many of our Latino families in Watsonville have continued to work through this pandemic, uh, ensuring that there are food on uh, tables and working in the service industry. Uh, and at times, uh, living in overcrowded housing. So all of those factors combined uh, are resulting in those higher percentages that we're seeing. As our local businesses struggle to operate under the state's health order restrictions, uh, our staff continue to help uh, them weather the storm. We're doing that in a variety of ways. That includes the council's approval of an executive order, allowing certain businesses to operate outdoors. Uh, recently moved to also a self-certification process, allowing for a more expedited review and approval process for those businesses that are wanting uh, to create more outdoor space. So far, we've had about thirteen businesses throughout the community take advantage of that. Some examples of that are the, are the farmhouse or Jalisco's in downtown, have expanded their outdoor dining space to be able to accommodate as many customers as they, as they can. We're also in the process of finalizing a formal parklet policy, allowing businesses to apply for converting parking spaces in some areas to outdoor space. Uh, at, at your next council meeting, as part of the uh, stimulus funding allocation plan, we will be including a grant program to help businesses fund those improvements if they're interested in adding a parklet uh, outside of their business. And as we all know, effective July twenty-eighth, uh, based on increased spread of COVID nineteen in our community, Santa Cruz County was added to the state's watch list, requiring indoor operations in several sectors to close again. And this obviously had a significant impact on many of our small businesses. And um, over the last several weeks, those businesses have been pivoting to figure out how they can best operate uh, under these new restrictions. The county was officially removed from the monitoring list on August fourteenth. However, that can be best described as being on probation. Uh, as we are now required to maintain all the state's metrics for fourteen consecutive days uh, before those businesses have the opportunity to resume indoor operations. Uh, in short, these businesses have not received a green light to uh, to reopen. And it obviously goes without saying that we need to continue to remain vigilant. Uh, we do meet the majority of the state metrics with the exception of the number of cases we've had within a fourteen period, a fourteen-day period. We continue to exceed what the state, uh, what the state requirements are. And for that reason, uh, it appears as though we will uh, remain uh, under monitor uh, for the foreseeable future. Staff continues to put significant energy and resources into supporting the South County Coalition's efforts to support risk mitigation uh, communication efforts. As I mentioned earlier, we know that the virus is disproportionately impacting Watsonville uh, in South County. And so our staff have been working with a coalition of community leaders to really put together a thoughtful and targeted approach to make sure that our community can make informed decisions about uh, their personal and work habits, uh, and as best they can, try to take preventative measures to protect both themselves, their family and their community members. This work has included providing videos, social media posts, as well as the distribution of printed materials. And as far as I know, we are the only city pushing out communication in English, Spanish and Mixteco. Again, in partnership with many of our, uh, many of our community members. Obviously, much of our attention now and energy over the last several days has been focused on supporting the CZU Lightning Fire Response Efforts. I wanted to take the opportunity to pause uh, and say that our thoughts and our prayers go out to the forty-five thousand displaced community members that have had to evacuate within Santa Cruz County. And especially those that have lost their homes uh, to the fires. And that are, that our prayers are with you. Uh, we have been here to help in any way that we can. And in response to a request for mutual aid from the county E O C, we activated our local E O C and declared a local emergency on August nineteenth to assist with evacuees and provide support combating the fire. There is a lot of information readily available on the current fire efforts. Uh, you can, you can find that on the CalFire website, social media pages, as well as on the county website. So I won't go into all the details on the current response efforts, but I did want to provide a high-level overview of the current status of the fire. So as I mentioned, we are fulfilling a number of mutual aid requests on several fronts, and I'll go into more detail on that uh here shortly. The fire, as of this morning, uh, had expanded to seventy-nine thousand acres. Uh, I believe that's over two hundred and fifty square miles. Seventy-seven thousand people have been evacuated. Uh, that includes both San Mateo and Santa Cruz Counties. Two hundred and fifty homes have been destroyed, and I believe as of this afternoon, that number has increased to three hundred. Uh, this is just uh the structures that the uh investigation teams have been able to confirm as they uh start re-entering uh burned areas uh where they can safely do so. So they do suspect that the number of lost structures is uh going to continue to grow as that team does their work. A little bit of positive news this morning as a result of favorable weather conditions, as well as the work of over sixteen hundred firefighters and personnel that are on the ground. Uh, containment has grown to about seventeen percent uh as of today. And there was a rapid expansion of shelters countywide just over the last four days. Uh, they had started off with a few shelters that were available in North and South County. As of last Friday, in between now and then, that has grown to fifteen shelters throughout the county, uh, including in Watsonville. Our first responders, city staff and community volunteers have responded in a big way. And I wanted to take a moment to thank our three Watsonville Fire Crews assisting the CalFire Strike Teams and our Watsonville PD that have been assisting with evacuations and securing neighborhoods over the last several days. As I mentioned, our EOC is now activated at level two as we respond to COVID and fire response efforts. Uh, Watsonville activated uh our EOC level uh two to allow for responding to these two crises uh in tandem. Uh, there are now fifteen shelters for evacuees and pets uh throughout the county. Uh, shelter capacity is at approximately two thousand beds in total. And so far, there is still one thousand two hundred and forty-nine uh occupancy as of uh August twenty-fifth. And so there is still capacity at many of the shelters throughout uh, throughout Santa Cruz County, uh, the fairgrounds uh as well. And we continue to monitor that situation closely. The Watsonville EOC is providing support uh with shelter, uh, donation logistics. And as I mentioned, uh, the three fi- fire engines that have been supporting strike teams. One of the first requests we received for mutual aid was to expand um a, a, available shelters. That was coming at the time that uh evacuation orders were made in Scotts Valley, uh, in other parts of North Santa Cruz County with the evacuation order increasing to forty-five thousand. So in anticipation of there being a flood of, of evacuees looking for um, looking for shelter, our, uh, our, our care and shelter branch uh quickly scrambled uh to identify available shelter sites. Uh, that includes Lakeview Middle School, Watsonville High and PV High School as a backup. Uh, we have already now fully equipped Lakeview Middle School to accommodate up to two hundred evacuees. That shelter is currently on standby and is available uh when needed uh to be activated. Our municipal airport has also had a flurry of activity. They activated their Emergency Aerial Support Action Plan. And they have been providing direct support to CalFire air operations over the last week as weather has allowed. Uh, Watsonville Airport has also served as host to many state officials that have been coming through the county as part of the fire response efforts. And our team has really been working around the clock to, to make the Watsonville Airport available as a resource, as it often has been during past emergencies, uh, including, including the earthquake. So in response to an overwhelming uh request for donations, our logistics and operations sections uh are also, also assisted with establishing the second donation site in Watsonville to serve as overflow from the Santa Cruz site, as well as accepting and distributing local donations to shelters and impacted families. The site is now open from eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week. And for those in the community that are interested in volunteering, you can go to the Santa Cruz Volunteer Center website and sign up to volunteer in the Watsonville donation site or at one of the shelters if you're uh interested in doing so. Really, since the start of the pandemic, we have all been very concerned about the health of our ag workers in the community. This is especially true now as the fire compounds, the health risks uh with poor. Uh, we heard earlier this evening some concerns from some of our community members uh regarding um emails and phone calls that we've received. And I know that both myself and our staff have uh tried to be responsive to those concerns and help uh get information out about the multitude of ways that uh both the city and our community partners have been uh trying to provide as much support to our ag workers uh as we can. Uh, city staff have been supporting ag worker safety efforts on a number of fronts, including partnering with Watsonville Campusino Appreciation Caravan on education and support efforts, including the distribution of essential items uh to ag worker families that, that are in need. Uh, many of those items were collected as part of a ag worker donation drive that the city spearheaded a couple of months ago, and we're still in the process of working with uh the Center for Farmworker Families and the Campusino Caravan uh to get those items out to farmworkers uh as part of those, as part of those outreach efforts. Excuse me. We have also supported the Ag Commissioner's efforts to work with ag employers, including the distribution of N ninety-five respirators. I know that this has been one of the top concerns raised from community members, and I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes talking about some of the complexities around uh N ninety-five respirators when it comes to um employment. So seventeen thousand masks have been distributed over the last several weeks and uh the Ag Commissioner has procured another twenty-five thousand masks that are now available to employers here within Santa Cruz County. As a couple of our council members mentioned earlier, this is a responsibility that rests with the county. Um, the city recognizing the important need there has been uh more than willing to step in and provide whatever support we can, and we will continue to do so. It's important to note that the use of N ninety-five masks is closely regulated by OSHA and the Department of Industrial Relations. So what that means is that only employers can distribute uh them to employees uh when the conditions require it. And ultimately, it is the employee's decision whether they choose to wear the mask or not. So with that said, uh, there is a significant outreach and education uh efforts underway to help ag workers make informed decisions uh around particularly the use of the mask, as well as how they can keep themselves and their families safe uh during this pandemic. And the Campusino Caravan has been a big part of these efforts, and I, I just wanted to uh applaud their work uh and ongoing efforts to really be out in the field uh working directly with employers and working directly with our farmworker families to ensure that they're getting the resources and uh the information that they need. Our staff have also been supportive in helping to produce many of the videos that have been posted on social media, uh, both in Mixteco, English and Spanish, uh, to make sure that that information is getting out in a variety of ways. Our Parks and Rec Department have been hard at work reinventing how they can meet community needs under the state health order restrictions. Uh, not an easy task as we continue to uh face new hurdles uh every day with this fluid uh rapidly moving situation. One such way is offering a new program we're calling Excel in Place, uh, aimed at providing support to our youth as they navigate distance learning, as well as access to much-needed recreational and social enrichment programs. Uh, as we all know, unfortunately, we're prohibited from gathering together as we typically would for National Night Out, which is one of my favorite events of the year. And so we are um huddling as a team with our Parks and Rec team uh to look at ways that we can work with neighborhood groups to schedule virtual and socially-distanced activities as our National Night Out uh event approaches. And that event has been uh rescheduled to October sixth, so put that on your calendar and uh more details to come. As the mayor mentioned earlier, our police department uh and my office have been working hand-in-hand on an ad hoc committee on policing and social equity. The application deadline uh closed on August fourteenth, and we have received twenty-five applications from community members interested in participating. So over the coming uh couple of weeks, we're going to be working on uh conducting the initial screening of the applications and submitting those to the uh three council members on the ad hoc committee uh for review and selection of the twelve applicants that will be ultimately be placed on the committee. The screening will be based on the criteria that was set forth in the application. And of course, also ensuring that the committee is, is diverse and representative of the community that we serve. I also want to put a plug in for the census. It's not too late to respond. Uh, as of today, I believe we're at sixty-five point nine percent response rate, so we still have a ways to go. Uh, my staff is putting a significant amount of effort in uh to outreach on this front as well uh to try to get, encourage as many of our families to participate in the census uh before the deadline on September thirtieth, so please help us with getting out the word. And I put in another plug-in for our wonderful library. This month, we're celebrating Library Card Sign-Up Month. Uh, this is a nationwide event. Uh, this year, uh, the theme is libraries are wonderful. I couldn't agree more. So if you don't have a library card, this month is your opportunity to do it, and our library is offering a full range of virtual services uh under the current uh circumstances. Lastly, I wanted to share a few ways that we are partnering and continue to partner with the Parro Valley Unified School District. Um, starting this week, we're going to be installing banners along Union Street, celebrating thirty, thirty-two Parro Valley Unified High School graduates uh that are on their way off to, off to college. You'll see those banners going up in front of Cabrillo uh shortly. And one of the programs I'm very excited about that's been long in the works is we, this week, are executing a joint-use agreement uh with the school district, which will provide public access to EA Hall, Radcliffe and Anzaldo uh outside of school operating hours. And these uh facilities were prioritized because they provide the most opportunity for uh access to athletic fields, uh, being able to walk around the track. And our hope is that this pilot will uh give us the opportunity to scale this to, to other school facilities as we move forward. And I want to give a kudos to our, our Parks and Rec Director for working closely with the district to uh, to accomplish that. So with that, I know that was a lot of ground to cover. Uh, there's been a lot of activity over the last couple of months, uh, but a lot of good work happening. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so this is time for the city council to ask clarifying and technical questions, so we'll start with Felipe.
Sorry, it's a little different than, than go-to meetings. Like, I, it's hard to find my mute button.
Okay.
Uh, is there any way that we can um also engage uh shippers and growers here on Walker Street in the conversation with uh the farmworkers and also Farm Bureau and Strawberry Commission um about the masks and everything else? And maybe uh more folks in the county than just uh, than, than uh the Ag Commissioner. Um, you know, I think if we get a bigger group, we can get um more outcomes, I think. And maybe more funding for masks as well.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Um, all of those agencies have been very involved um in, in putting these protections in place. We're happy to continue serving as a bridge uh to convene those partners and make sure we're doing everything we can to get those resources um out to our farmworker families. I can't tell you that in conversations with uh shippers and growers and the Strawberry Commission, uh, I've been impressed with uh the lengths that they've gone uh to ensure these resources are available uh to their, to their growers and by extension to their uh, to the ag workers as well. There's always more that we can do. Um, and as was mentioned earlier today too about concerns the community have, I'm, I'm always more than happy to have conversations with community members about how they, um, how they may want to get involved or what ideas they have. Uh, I can't tell you that there's a lot of effort underway, uh, a lot of work being done uh based on the concern we all have of wanting to protect our essential workers who continue to be out on the front lines throughout this pandemic and now throughout um one of the largest fires that our county has faced. So we don't take that lightly, and uh there will certainly be more conversations to come.
One, one more thing, you know, I think one of the things that Monterey County is doing is that they're, they're encouraging uh these agencies to do PSAs about what they're doing. And I don't think they're doing it here to let the public know that they're distributing these N ninety-five masks to the farmworkers. And so I think that if they let the public know, I think um it would be, it would behoove them, I think, if they do let the public know uh some of these actions that they're doing. Um, you know, but if, if we can work with them to, you know, let them know, you know, do a, some sort of uh public outreach of what the actions that they're doing uh or collaborator, how we're collaborating to, to do these things.
Yeah, I do think the county is doing a lot of work behind the scenes, but I think they have realized that um as they're running from task to task, that they may be able to do a better job of uh promoting what work is being done. Um, we actually reached out to uh County PIO last week and um a PSA was pushed out um in conjunction with Juan Hidalgo, the Ag Commissioner, trying to highlight all the efforts that are underway. And so we, we will continue to support those efforts. I think you're right that there's a lot of work happening and, and uh we could do a better job of making sure the community understands uh all the work that's underway.
Okay, thank you, Felipe. Uh, moving on to Lowell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I found my mute button here. You know, I have a little perspective on uh some of these things that not everybody has, having been uh uh elected five times and appointed once. Three different uh, three, maybe mayor, three different times in two different centuries. And so I've gotten a chance to work with uh a number of city managers and, and seen them up close and personal for many, in many good times and some very difficult times as well. And I've got to say that uh, you know, Matt Hefger goes unrecognized as a, as a very star player here. He is working very hard under some extremely difficult conditions. And we've had some good city managers and Matt is uh, uh up in the top echelon of them as well. And so I think, you know, the criticism that gets heat on him by community members that maybe aren't happy about a number of things, and there's plenty of reasons to be unhappy these days. And I think everybody is unhappy these days. I think we all need to take a, a step back, get a, get a, get a fresh breath of air and we're going to move on in our, in our situation here. We're go, we're going to, we're going to move into a better zone at some point in time. But let's hang in there and work together. And I just want to thank the city manager for all his hard work and uh I, I'm, I'm thankful that uh he's here and uh that I can still be a, be a decision-maker on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Lowell. Uh, moving on to Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to keep myself uh brief here. I, I want to thank, first of all, all the staff uh and, and also against the community because between both of them, uh, we've been able to do a lot of good things within the city of Watsonville. And I, and I think our city manager is, is one of those that's up in the front leading us uh and getting some of this stuff done. I know it's sometimes it's difficult, um, especially now with these, this pandemic, that we get together and, and have a conversation person-to-person uh for those folks in the community that have a lot of concerns on what needs to be done. But, you know, those conversations could still happen. We just have to figure out new ways to do it, in a sense. And so we just need to continue to keep working together. Uh, that's ultimately the, the, the goal, and, and we will come out of this a lot better than where we were. Thank you.
Thank you, Aurelio, and Ari.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, Matt, thank you very much for a very comprehensive and detailed report. I took a lot of screenshots because it's a lot of good detailed information that I know a lot of the public asked for. Um, and uh, it's appreciated. Um, I, I know there's a lot to be angry about in today's world because there's a lot of people who always want to make, make it better for others. And we do that. But I, I do have to say, from a teacher point of view, who has become a city councilperson for a few years, and I'm certainly not in Councilman Hurst's um realm. Uh, I don't have that length of experience, but I do know this. There's so much more I don't know than I do know. And every day uh in, in this uh elected position, I learn more about it. So um, yeah, to get called incompetent, I, I think like teachers do. I can always do better tomorrow, and I think we always try. Uh, the city is a great city, but we're six point three million dollars in deficit. And we are doing everything um we can, including um deferring the uh salaries of, you know, of our top people who, and Matt is included in that and is not taking those. I mean, I just think there's so much we don't talk about um and that we, that we give up in the city. Um, the public elected The public elected staff. And I just, I just want you to know, it's a difficult time for everybody. And, and I, I, once again, I'm going to bring you back to the positive. We all try, get up every morning and do our best. And I think if our best needs to be a little bit better in some areas and some of that may be communication, then that's what we do. But the vitriol, you know, I'll leave that at the door. I, I don't mind passion. I think passion is good. I myself was a poli sci major, but here's the thought, you know, there's so much good that's coming out of it. And, and, and one of the things, and I'll say an appreciation to Matt is if we don't have the money, he sure knows how to put a coalition together who does have the money and who can do the support. So that in itself is, is, is an amazing talent. So I do appreciate that greatly. And I, I, I think it's one of those fly under the radar talents that happen many times because all these other folks come to the forefront. So much appreciation on that. Thank you, Mayor, for the time and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ari. Matt, I did have a question for you. You mentioned that we're no longer, we had not been in the watch list any longer, but we were like in probation. And you mentioned something about hospitalization, but I didn't understand or I didn't get clarity on that. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. So even the county is trying to figure out exactly what it means to be off the list, but still not be able to reopen businesses. It's, it's kind of this strange limbo that counties are in as they move off of the watch list. What we do know is that the State Department of Health has said, if you move off, what that means is we're still watching you, even if you're not on the official monitoring list. However, you need to continue meeting all of the state metrics that they've identified for fourteen consecutive days to stay off of the list. Otherwise you run the risk of being back on the official monitoring list. Now there are a number of metrics that are used. I don't have all of them in front of me, but it includes hospitalization rate, positivity rate, which means the amount of tests that are being done, how many of those come back positive. And it also means the number of cases we have per 100,000 population over a two week period. And that is the one metric we continue to exceed. That's still true today. We're still exceeding that metric as it stands now. So really the only way we can influence that is to try to bring the total case numbers down with all of the safety measures that we continue to promote.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. This is time now to get some public input. So if there's anybody in the public that would wish to speak on this presentation, please be prepared to do so now.
Mayor, if, if I may, first I would just like to encourage, as we're, as we are trying new technology, I want to encourage all members of the public that are in the meeting that wish to speak about these items, that they raise their hand now. So I know who to allow to enter into the room to speak. And I will do that in an orderly manner. So if you wish to speak, this is a time to do that. Please raise your hand now. And I have Rosa Noriega who I'm allowing to come in. Rosa, if you can please unmute your mic, you may speak to the council at this point.
Hi, yeah, thank you so much for that. Um, I just wanted to once again reiterate my point that I made earlier about, you know, creating mutual aid funds. I know you all talked extensively about providing farm workers with masks. I would like to tell you all that I'm the daughter of farm workers. My mother got her N95 mask yesterday. Okay, let, let, let's make that clear. Yesterday, the AQI has been horrible over these past few days. So I, I find it kind of insulting for board members to come on here and say that my anger is not valid, that I shouldn't be calling you all incompetent. I'm sorry, but this is a slap in the face. My mother has been out there working in the fields, picking your berries. For what? She's exposing herself, she's on the front lines and she barely got her mask. I know that's the responsibility of the grower to provide the mask. I know that, I understand that. If we had a mutual aid fund, if we made that a priority as a city in which we redistributed these resources to farm workers, to the people who make the city go round, don't you think she would have had access to a mask, to proper materials long ago? I, I ask you to ponder on that. I ask you to ponder on why you question my anger as a daughter of farm workers. Just ponder on that for, for, for a quick minute. Okay? I reserve my time.
Thank you, Rosa, for your comments. Okay, next.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth. I'm from District Seven. It is just so dismissive, the way that the council is referring to us for simply asking for accountability. I'm asking us to organize on our own time or to give our name and address in, on here. Like if we really want to organize, say your name, say your address. Aurelio, dude, there's the President of the United States is targeting organizers. Like it, it's out there and you want me to put myself in danger because I want better for my community? Because I want to reach out to other people that also agree with me? Clearly you guys stand by Matt, right? You're not listening to our side either. I spent an hour speaking to Juan Hidalgo on my free time on Saturday, trying to understand and learn what N95 masks and the AQI of 151 and what it all means. I have spent my time reaching out to collectives. There are so many people in this city that are ready to help our campesinos, whether the AQI is at 151 or at 67. You guys hide behind this red tape and then you tell us why we're angry, like to focus on, on, on something else. It, it's so dismissive, it's so rude, it's so divisive. We've been trying to communicate. Did you not hear multiple people said the same thing? We email Matt, he ignores our emails. He only wants to work with people that are willing to cooperate with what he wants, not with real change. We're not going to get real change by aligning ourselves with people that believe exactly what we believe. That's the definition of the opposite. Like if you want diversity and you want real voices, then you have to be willing to work with people that are going to call you out on your shit. Like you have to be willing to put yourself out there and be held accountable. I am held accountable, you can hold me accountable if you'd like. You as community members in this position of power should be held accountable at a higher standard. The fact that you're parading your help with Campesino caravan is almost like, is that the only reason you're helping them? Because I have a list of collectives, they want to get to the farms, they have the resources to give to the campesinos. Work with me, go ahead and email me back. Let me know how you can help me with my collectives. Because if you're only choosing to help one collective, you're only amplifying one collective with one message, your message, then you're not working with the community. Do you understand that? We are trying to work with you. We are angry because it's been months of us trying to work with you. Like you want us to get angry? This is anger. When we talk to you guys, we have to calm ourselves down. We have to write down what we have to say because you refuse to listen to us. You dismiss us, you tell us we have no reason to be angry when you sit there and you have no accountability. What we're asking for is accountability. We are so willing to work with you. How many meetings have I attended? How much have I learned? We are here, you are not.
Thank you for your words, Elizabeth. Moving on to the next one.
The speaker, HCA at Human Care Alliance that wishes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I thank you for being here today. This isn't what I'm calling about, but I did find it a little disorienting for my work. I give comment and I'm used to giving the written comment. So it was a bit confusing today, so I can understand some of the frustration. But the main reason I'm calling in was to thank you for continuing the additional funding for the nonprofits that serve your community. And we are trying to encourage people to shop local in jurisdictions, cities within this county who have made a very tough decision. We think it's a smart decision to continue to add funding into the nonprofits. So if anybody is getting social services from a nonprofit or childcare or rides or meals, please encourage your friends and neighbors to shop local and add tax money to your city so that they can continue to fund these services. This will save your city a lot of money because nonprofits reduce crime and they decrease the amount of response and resources that your local city and county agencies have to provide. It's not measurable because these are police calls that you don't get. And these are resources that are not being drawn from other places. But these agencies are committed to continue to help your community to grow and to be safe and to have basic needs. And I'm hearing that that continues to be a struggle. And so I hope you will thank your representatives for this one act. If you can't agree on anything else, that is definitely helping everybody. Thank you for your time.
Could you give us your name? I just have Human Care Alliance, but I didn't hear a name.
Leah Samuels, I'm the executive director.
Oh, Leah, thank you for comments.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
Okay. Any further comments?
We have one more speaker that I see hands up. This will be the last speaker unless someone else wants, wishes to speak. Please raise your hand. Steve Trujillo, this is now your time to turn, to talk. Go ahead, Steve, you, you have been muted, you can talk now. You're muted, Steve, can you please unmute your mic? Okay. Steve, we, we cannot hear you. So I see that you're muted, but for whatever reason, we cannot hear you.
Will you ask Steve to send in an email with what it was he wanted to share?
Steve, did you, did you hear the mayor? You're also able to call in if, if you're not able to speak with your computer. There's a phone number that you can dial into the meeting for later items. Thank you. I don't see any more hands raised, so that will be the end of public comment on this item.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to consent agenda. Unless there's an item to be pulled, I'll, yes, Beatrice?
Give me, give me a second so I can go into the Spanish channel and ask anyone if they want to speak.
Yes, thank you for reminding us about that.
Is there any Spanish? Alguien que quiere hablar en español, por favor, ahorita es el tiempo. Nomás pulsen donde dice inglés para que vayan al de inglés y la intérprete, por favor, también lo sigues al, al inglés. No, tú pones ah y puedes entrar al de inglés. Gracias, por favor, levanten su mano si quieren hablar. Mayor, we're checking to see if there's any hands, if any hands went up and I don't see any.
Okay, so then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Unless there's someone that'd like to pull something from the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, Lowell, you make the motion. Aurelio, you want to make a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion on the consent agenda during this motion? Lowell.
Well, you got a great big, thick consent agenda, Mayor, is a monster. Everything from the plaza to trails to water lines, filter plant, wells, downtown businesses, housing, library, mobile home issue. You know, I think the mobile home issue is a great big one. And I think that, you know, we're going to have a lot of happy mobile home folks if we can get what we need out of the state on that one. So I would just ask all our friends in the mobile home parks to take a good look at that item. And you got some new commissioners coming on too. And so congratulations for a, a very robust consent agenda.
Thank you for pointing it out because we went beyond A through Z. We, we created new letters. I have a question, Matt, on D regarding the response packet for the Santa Cruz County Civil Grand Jury. There's several, in your response, you have several markings in terms of that you agree with the grand jury's findings and several partially disagree with the findings. So my question is, when will you be, be returning to the council to update us on the remedies for those findings?
So as part of this round, we've received for the community's benefit, we received four grand jury reports over the last couple of months. And we are required to respond, the council in this case is required to submit a response within 90 days. So bringing these items before you meets that 90 day submission requirement. The items within the, within the report that we partially agree, we'll be looking at opportunities for, for what additional changes we can make to better, to better meet those requirements over the coming months. I would expect that as part of the council's strategic plan as we update it. And as we do budget updates, which we're doing quarterly, we'll look for opportunities to, to build that into that process. You can expect that to happen over the next three to six months.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any further questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll have roll call.
Mayor, did you ask for public input on consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot all about it. No, thank you for reminding me. Yes, this is the time now for public input. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address any consent agenda item?
Yes, Mayor, Steve, let's try it again. You're in, you're allowed to speak now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, Steve.
Wonderful, well, that's only taken an hour and 40 minutes. Look, this is an incredibly long agenda. You know, the fact you've gone past 26 items tells me that this probably should, meeting should have probably been divided up into two meetings at least. Not that all of them aren't important, even those that are more mundane. But when you have as many speakers wanting to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you need to realize that they need to be, we all need to be heard. And yes, Elizabeth was absolutely correct in what she said. And Elizabeth, you were right on the money. Now, um, for the city to be able to properly function, it is really important that the individuals who are looking at the consent agenda have the right to be able to not consent and be able to pull off some items for further discussion. Does that take more time? Of course it does. But in a democracy, folks, and yes, I taught American government for many years, we are, we, you, you guys that are elected, you govern with the consent of the rest of us. You are governing with the consent of the governed and I'm one of them, even though I'm running for office. And the others as well feel the same frustration as I do that spoke me in the meeting, such a long consent agenda, so very little time to be able to address all of the items. And I believe there were what, 28? Which is beyond anything I've ever seen and it is truly, it's truly worrisome. It's very baffling. And I know that there are other, other issues, including this last meeting that was held in, in, in quiet, or I should say undercover between a certain member of the public and the, our, our, our city clerk. And I'm sorry, Beatrice, for having to go through this, this is not pleasant. And I can only tell you that I can only tell you that I gave, send you my best wishes uh, for all your hard work and and going through this. But look, folks, we really should have divided this up into two sections. And the public really needs to have more time to be able to absorb all of these items that are supposedly uh, consented by all the members of the council. Paco's not even there tonight because he's taking care of his new child. Uh, this really wasn't very well thought out. And yes, I'm delivering some criticism. While on the other hand, I appreciate all your work, including you, mayor. Uh, because this has been a terrible time for the city and not just the city, but the state. And uh, driving to trying to get through all these items on the consent agenda is just Herculean. Actually, this, this meeting, if we took all 28 items, this could last until midnight. And I've been uh, sitting in the front row when we had meetings in person uh, till 2 AM. And I wasn't even elected city council member as well. So I realize that it's a very big strain, but I think maybe we need to have one more city council meeting just for the consent agenda and have an extra meeting this month because uh, there are so many issues on that agenda. And I thank you for now listening to me. Good night.
Thank you for your comments, Steve. Okay, moving on, we're ready for the roll call now.
Nancy, Nancy, now's your turn to speak.
Oh, there is somebody else? Oh, I'm sorry.
There, there's two more people on the queue, mayor.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We need to check on the Spanish speakers, if there's any.
Um, this is Nancy. Oh, thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment that I'm glad that we have someone to um, join Zone 7. I think it's gonna be great to have another uh, community member um, with that agency. So thank you. Um, that's on consent tonight and uh, congratulations to Violet Lucas.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Yes, we are happy. She's willing to serve. Uh, another person?
Elizabeth, it's now your time for to talk.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to um, basically say the same thing Steve Trujillo said. I think that this agenda is really a lot of information for us to try to consume and try to be involved. Um, we are actively trying to be involved and understand all that you guys do and how it is that you do it. So that when we come with you guys with suggestions, we know that it's something that could work. So we want to understand what these meetings are about. And when you guys give us so many items, it it's hard for us. Um, it's yet another hindering thing that we, we want to be involved. We email you guys, we call you guys, we look at these agendas, we download them, we try to understand what it means. But when it's so much and our city is going through so much right now, we're literally so tired. And even you guys, I don't know how you're gonna just set this agenda for yourselves after the week that we've all collectively had. I think that as a city, we're all collectively just tired. Um, so if something like Steve said could be done where this could be divided and um, we can spend the time to understand what the information that you guys are presenting us with, I think that that would be great. Um, I do want to take a quick moment to acknowledge Federico Castañeda. He was my counselor when I was in high school. He had an open door policy where we could come in on lunchtimes and he guided us through many tough events in our class. Our class personally had some tough losses. And I remember specifically Mr. Castañeda was there for us. He amplified our voices. He helped us in any which way that he could. Mr. Orejel that I heard earlier, I haven't seen him in over a decade. And I remember both of them being so kind, so open to our students, giving us advice, holding us when we were sad, like the the amount of love that we received from Mr. Castañeda in the time that we were in high school with him. I I carried it with me. I was very sad to hear about his passing. I'm glad that the city recognized him. Um, he was a very important part of our senior class specifically. Um, and we're very, very sorry for his, that we've lost him. So I do want to thank the city for taking the time to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for your words. Anybody else?
I don't see any more public coming at this time.
Okay, then we'll move on to roll call.
Mayor, is there any Spanish speakers?
Oh, I forgot about it. Thank you for reminding me. Do we have any Spanish speakers?
I'll check. Si, por favor, pueden levantar la mano si quieren hablar en español y entrar en el canal que dice inglés. Mayor, I don't see anyone.
Okay, we'll move on. Finally, we can take roll call.
Yes.
Tina Cabman Gomez?
Yes, please move on.
Estrada? Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to our uh, next item, uh, which is um, a public hearing, uh, considering consideration of time extension of tentative met. No, no, that's the wrong one. I'm, okay, yeah, uh, it it's a hearing, consideration of time extension of tenant. Uh, oh, that was A. We we're going to do B first? No, final adoption of, uh, okay, here we are. I I'm getting confused. Uh, final adoption of uh, uncodified urgency ordinance enacting a temporary moratorium on evictions due to non-payment of residential rent for tenants where the failure to pay rent results from income loss resulting from the novel, uh, the coronavirus COVID-19 uh, virus. Uh, and for this one, we're going to need five votes to to pass it. So we'll start with a staff report. Okay. Let's see, there we are.
All right, good evening, mayor, council, city staff, members of the public. I'm Carlos Landaverri, housing manager in the Community Development Department. Back in May, after convening a meeting with the Housing Task Force, housing staff and city staff recommended that the city council allowed the eviction moratorium to lapse due to federal and state protections prohibiting tenant evictions and foreclosures. Things have been changing rapidly, especially since the end of July. Federal stimulus bill that was passed back in March expired on July 31st. This ended the $600 weekly supplemental checks for the unemployed. It also ended the federal ban on evictions and foreclosures. And at the state level, on August 13th, the Judicial Council voted to allow the temporary emergency rules on evictions and foreclosures to expire effective September the first. Even after the city's moratorium expired, the Housing Task Force continued to meet. We met on June the 11th and on August the 6th in order to share information and to discuss recommendations to best protect vulnerable tenants in Watsonville. The group shared what they were experiencing, both as tenant advocates and as landlords. We then discussed existing and proposed federal and state bills regarding housing. Oops, sorry. So at the, at the August 6th meeting, staff proposed that a new eviction moratorium be considered by the city due to the laws of federal and state protections. The group discussed the details that might be included in a new ordinance. In general, the landlords and property managers recommended against a moratorium, whereas the tenant advocate recommended for reinstating the eviction moratorium. There were concerns from both sides, which included allowing landlords to evict tenants for non-COVID-19 related reasons, giving tenants more time to notify their landlords of their inability to pay rent, requiring documentations to prove that the reason why the tenants could not pay rent was due to COVID-19. They also talked about penalizing all landlords due to a few bad actors. And they also talked about having more protections for landlords who may not be able to afford to continue paying their mortgage if a tenant cannot pay a rent. And so based on those concerns, the expiration of the federal stimulus package, the eviction and foreclosure protections that expired at the federal level, and then the judicial council rules that are set to expire on September 1st. The staff has drafted a revised eviction moratorium urgency ordinance that includes the following changes. So the previous moratorium required that tenants affected by COVID-19 provide notice to their landlord prior to rent being due. This placed a significant burden on tenants who may have difficulty contacting their landlords prior to the first of the month. And so in order to provide additional latitude for noticing landlords, the proposed ordinance requires the tenants providing notice to their landlord within seven days of rent being due. And given the rapidly changing and unpredictable nature of this crisis, the proposed ordinance states that it will be in effect until the local state of emergency is lifted. This will ensure that tenant protections stay in place throughout the duration of the local state of emergency. And finally, yes, there we are. And finally, um, also in order that tenants are made aware of their rights and resources if they are served with an eviction notice, the ordinance would require that any landlord that serves a tenant with an eviction notice also provide them with a handout that provides the tenant with information on eviction moratorium and community resources available to them. So the proposed ordinance will protect residential tenants who live within the city limits, who can demonstrate through documentation or other objectively verifiable means that their inability to pay rent is due to COVID-19, the state of emergency regarding COVID-19, or following government-recommended COVID-19 precautions. You may recall that back in April, the city council approved a substantial amendment to the CDBG consolidated plan in order to allow for the disbursement of additional funds to address the COVID-19 pandemic. The council authorized $100,000 to be provided to Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County to provide qualifying Watsonville residents with emergency housing assistance. That funding supported rent payments or subsidies for a total of 66 families. And so as part of tonight's action, and in order to continue to provide rental assistance to those residents, the staff is also requesting that the city council direct staff to develop an in-house city-led emergency rental assistance program. City staff will bring a resolution to council to allocate approximately $100,000 from the general fund to support those city residents that are seeking protection under the eviction moratorium and that have been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. And so with that, it is a staff recommendations that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance to prevent COVID-19 cost evictions and direct staff to develop an in-house emergency rental, rental assistance program to assist tenants affected by COVID-19 and return to council to approve a budget allocation to fund the program. That concludes my presentation. We will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I didn't realize I was muted. My cat was meowing. Okay. Oh, we're gonna start with Lowell. Okay, it'll be Lowell, then Aurelio, Ari, Trina, and Felipe. So Lowell?
Uh, thank you very much, mayor. And I want to thank Carlos uh, for all his work on this. You know, housing is so critical and so important to people. And and I don't want to see landlords throw tenants out on the street. So, you know, how do we, how do we get the message to tenants that uh, you know, they really do have to pay their bill? And they might have a little grace period, but they still have to uh, pay the landlord because I hear the landlords have bills too. And I'm not a tenant nor a landlord, so I don't, I don't pretend to know a whole lot about this particular subject. But I have been listening to what people have said and have written us and the concerns that are really on both sides of the uh, of the, who writes a check and who gets a check. So I just want to hear a little bit more about how, how landlords and tenants are going to work together and help each other out under these really difficult, difficult times.
So the question to you, Carlos, is, did you understand the question, Carlos?
No, can you go ahead and repeat it, please?
Uh, sure. The, the question is, with these extraordinary times that we're having, I want to make sure that we're fair to tenants and that we're fair to landlords. And how do we, how do we communicate to both sides that uh, you know, they, they need to find some way to pay their bills on both ends of who writes a check as well as who cashes a check.
Right. I think, hi, well, I can answer that. I'm Suzy Merriam, Community Development Director. What we're working on are handouts in both English and Spanish for landlords as well as tenants. Uh, it's kind of like a tenant's bill of rights and then landlord responsibilities as we go forward with this uh, moratorium. Uh, if it's passed tonight, uh, so that, and we are also gonna work on a campaign on um, radio and and our social media accounts to really try to get the word out, um, both what tenants' responsibilities are as well as what landlords' responsibilities and rights are during this.
Well, I'm really pleased to hear that. But I'm not sure how that, you know, if a flyer is uh, gonna be adequate for all, all parties involved, or if it's gonna take a little bit more than uh, just a a handout or a flyer, and how would those be distributed as well?
One thing that we've talked about doing is actually including that information in the utility bills that go out to all the customers in the city. Um, and just really trying to get that information out um, during this time that we can't actually go door to door um, and and meet with people. Uh, but trying to get it out in all the other ways, um, you know, all the channels that we have available to us and making sure that um, the nonprofits that support tenants as well have that information.
Well, I think it's really critical that that level of communication goes forward and, and, and that we take a look and and evaluate it. Because as I understand it, almost 60% of the housing in Watsonville is rental housing. And maybe I don't have that number quite right, but
It's close, yeah.
There's, there's a lot of rentals.
Yes.
And that means there's a lot of landlords, too.
Thank you, Lowell. Uh, moving on to Aurelio.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Yeah, I have a few questions. First question is, um, we're looking at the city to run this program. And my concern here is the outreach to the community. Um, and how the community is gonna be able to make that contact with the city. As it is, it's difficult when COVID- make that contact with the city. As it is, it's difficult when COVID wasn't in existence. And right now for some that aren't computer savvy or don't have the education to be able to go online and fill out forms, what kind of assistance are we going to get them? And how can we work with our nonprofits and other collectives to, to get this information and be able to assist them in doing that? And then the other question is on landlords, I mean, because it's a concern on both sides. We can't have landlords losing housing because of lack of, of non-payment. Then it's something, again, that's going to be lost. And we can't afford to lose housing now. So, I mean, their big concern is, of course, being able to cover their costs to keep that housing under their, under their, their domain, I guess. Unfortunately, it's an awful word to say, but. And so those are two questions if you can answer them right now.
Well, let me, so let, let me start on the outreach aspect. And thank you for your questions. So it, this requires a collaboration with our local nonprofits. It also requires collaboration with our property management companies, with our landlords, with our developers. But luckily, we already have a housing task force that includes some of those people. But it also requires, and we're already talking about partnering with our school district, so we can get the word out. And so if, with your blessing today, tomorrow, we start working on outreach. And our first event, it's tentatively scheduled for Thursday evening with a webinar so that we can start getting people. Time is of the essence and rent will be due by next week. So if we have a webinar this Thursday and we have another one or two next week and we can start getting that information out, that's how we are going to disseminate all of that information. But it requires working with our local nonprofits. As you know, some of our nonprofits are already helping renters. And so if they direct them, if we have a program here and we can work with them, so they can direct them this way, we will be able to, to work with them. In regards to homeowners, the federal protections also allowed a mortgage forbearance for federally backed mortgages. And that trickle down to all the other banks, including locally Bay Federal, that has a lot of mortgages in the area. And they're not necessarily backed by Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac, but they're still, they're allowing homeowners to not make any payments for four months. And so they have that benefit for now. Going forward, our priority will be to help renters. The moratorium is great, but we also need to help renters so that they don't fall behind. And so we're going to do, we're going to have a very robust outreach program so that we can reach as many renters as possible. And we will be counting also on you and all of our Facebook and, and the media folks so that you can also help us get out of the word.
And just for clarification, we're actually helping landlords when we help renters. I know the last program we had set up with a nonprofit with CAB was it, CAB was actually paying directly to the landlords. Are we going to have that same structure where that individual, that family comes to seek assistance? And we assist them in paying the rent so the landlord gets the, the money due to him? So the family is covered?
Yes, that's the, the way we, we, we would have structured the program so that the rent goes directly to the provider and then we don't have to deal with people getting the money and that paying rent. So we want to make that is used for that.
And my last question is, I, I want to see that this task force continue moving forward. I think it's important that we continue making these communications and building these structures because it'll make us a better community overall. Thank you, Carlos, for all your hard work.
Thank you, Aurelio. We'll move on now to Ari.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Carlos. Yeah, thank you for all the hard work. I, I've been attending, not speaking, but attending the, the meetings. And there's a lot of good information and there was some really outspoken comments. And I think it's a, it's a venue that needs, you know, that conversation needs to happen. We still have questions, so you can verify. So there's a notice now that within seven days before or after rent is due, they have to communicate with their landlord. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And is that in writing?
Yes, that's also correct. It's in writing. It can be an email. It can be a text.
Okay. And do they have to send that to any other body or any place else other than just their landlord at that time?
Just their landlord or the property or their agent, whomever they have communicated with in the past.
Okay. And it sounds like you're putting together this huge coalition of, of sources that can help renters in emergencies. What, what do you guys estimate the amount of money that this support might look like? I mean, ballpark?
We don't know. So we want to start with $100,000, but the reality is that right now we don't have, or we have very limited data because the courts are not processing any evictions. And because this is the first month without the supplemental, the $600 supplemental income for the unemployed, I think that in the next couple of weeks, that's when we will see the real numbers. And so based on what we see going forward, we, we may come back to council and we may have to adjust our plan. But our plan based on the, our experience is to start with $100,000 and see how we go from there.
Okay. And, and that brings me to a statistical question. And the thought is, how many, I'm just trying to figure out within the city limits and outside the city limits in the county, whether it's Monterey County or Santa Cruz County, we're serving people within the city limits.
That is correct.
We don't quite know what the statistic is because we've had these protections either locally or by the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because when I was sitting in the conversation, there was two sides to that, right? I was listening to two sides. There was one side that said, we have hundreds of people and this is an emergency. The other side saying, no, I mean, we're talking to people. It's not within the city. We're doing pretty good. But the statistics of it, you know, the factual portions of what you're talking about, that people are coming in to discuss it, I think is really important for us. And so I, I'm very grateful to hear that you're going to stay on top of that and then bring that back to us if we hear it. I also want to go back to a point I think Lowell brought up, Councilman Hearst earlier, is, you know, our community is balanced by the people who rent here. Yeah, we have over 50%. I was a renter here for quite a many years. And, and those people that are landlords. And I know a lot of renters and I know a lot of landlords. And I'm just, I worry because people have the perception that all landlords are like billionaires. And the landlords I know are like retired teachers and they own another house and that's part of their retirement. And they're not, they're on a fixed income and they're not able to pay their mortgage. So what I'm hearing is this is going to stop, I, I, because I'm worried about it too because our community is more than just one group or the other. If, if people lose their property, then everybody gets kicked out of that property. Isn't, that's how it goes, right? So we don't want people to lose their property and we want to be able to help people stay in their home. And I know it's between a rock and a hard place for us, but I'm, I'm cheered up with the thought of $100,000. And then there's some communication that has to happen. And, and, and people have to reach out. So the outreach aspect of it, I know as a school district employee, I think that's great because our parents of all of our students that live here, they learn so much from, you know, the dissemination that comes from our schools. So I guess lastly is, will we know all the different community partners that are going to be a part of this as they come on board? Because I, I guess they're not all on board yet and you're going to be outreach with that. But will you, will you be able to come back to us and let us know?
Yes, of course. We can come back to council and give you a report.
Okay. Like, thank you very much, Carlos and Suzy and Damada for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ari. We'll continue with Trina.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to go back to when we originally brought this as an emergency ordinance. And one of the criteria that I emphasized is show us the data. We know that there have been 66 households that have been able to benefit from the money going through Community Action Board. How many applications? And how many of them, I, I know that you gave us an average of each certificate, but how many applications were there received?
Yes. So from the top of my head, and thank you for your question, we had, CAB had a total of 100, as of, as of July, a total, a total of 177 applications. The vast majority were from people outside the city limits or people that did not have a rental agreement. We had, and out of those, we served them on a first come, first served basis, a total of 66 families. And we collect demographic information on that because we have to report all of that to the federal government. And so we, we compiled all of that. If you want details on all of that, we can break them down on the number outside the city limits. How many didn't have a rental agreement? How many qualified within the city limits and how, and the total 66 that we assisted. The average loan, not loan, but grant amount was $1,288. We allowed a total of $1,500 per household, but the average was $1,288.
So the 66 could have easily been 100% of those that applied within the city limits?
It was very close.
Okay. So we're, we're out of the money that we're doing. We spent it all on all of the applicants that came in and pretty well equally divided it out. So what it sounds like.
Correct.
I, I want, before we allocate any more money, I want to make sure that all of council and the public can see the statistics so that we can see what the demographics are about for the, the need. And the, the criteria that you're using or that, that had been using for the, those that were needing the, the funds for this, and I know I'm going a little bit more on the funding side than this ordinance at this point, but it's, this ordinance created that situation. What were the documents that the tenants were required to submit in order to apply for the grant?
Yes. The process was, we tried to keep it simple. They needed to have a rental agreement and they needed to prove that they had a loss or reduction of income due to COVID-19.
And that will be the, that will be continued in terms of this ordinance? So we're going to continue along that, that, that same line of inquiry and proof of evidence?
Yes, for now, that is the plan.
Okay. The other question I have is, this particular report referenced N28-20, which is the, this local state of emergency order, and that's the state order. And in it, the, the COVID-19 was to go up until October 17, 2020. Can we, do we have the ability, I believe we should, so that we have an end date here, use that date so that it's part of the language of this ordinance?
You, as a council, have the ability to do that? You will remember that in, before we had our, the ordinance with an end date of May 31st. And so if you have a specific end date and the crisis continues, we may have to come back to council for you to consider continuing or letting it expire. And so based on that experience, this time around, we said, well, it's easier to have it expire when the emergency ends. And if by then or in next month, if we have something from the state that would trump our local rules, that would give our renters protections, and that would be better than what we have now, then it would be easier to bring it to council and, or not do anything with it. So that was the thinking behind it.
Well, my, my thought process is if there is a tenant that has a situation that decides that this is what they're going to use and the, there, the documentation, I know that you have like three points, and if they don't provide point three, there are going to be some people on the borderline that don't have all of point three that then that landlords do have the ability to take them to the eviction process. And, and to be able to do so before their accrual of their deferment, though, what they're falling behind on is to be the point where there's no, no insight for being caught up. I just want to make sure that we're not setting this up for failure for the tenants, that we continue to continue to continue to perpetuate and not have a date, step back, look and assess the process and then make sure that it's working or not working. So those are, how do we make sure that this policy gives us those stopgaps that we have the evaluation instead of a non-end date?
Matt?
Aaron, Council. So just a couple of points I wanted to add to what Suzy and Carlos have already mentioned. One, I want to make very clear that this, this moratorium is intended to be limited, limited in time, right? This is an urgency measure to try to protect our families, keep them housed during a pandemic, acknowledging that the regulatory climate has been very fluid. So our commitment to the council is that if those protections lapsed, as they have now under the state order and as they have under the judicial council's decision, we would come back to you to put protections in place to close the gap. So as Carlos mentioned, and we've been in conversations with our state legislative advocacy firm, JEA, they've been paying close attention to bills that are moving through the legislature. In fact, they informed us just this afternoon that this is their number one priority right now is to reach a compromise on how to ensure that there are protections for renters. There's a number of things being explored like tax credits and, and looking at creating funds that could be accessed by renters that are struggling. We don't know yet what they're going to land on, but it's very likely that they will reach agreement in the not too distant future. If that were to happen and it resulted in the, the local moratorium no longer being required, of course, we would bring that back to you to give you the option of either keeping it in place or letting it, or letting it lapse at that, at that point in time. So we're going to be keeping close track of that as we move forward. And, and as we've all acknowledged throughout this conversation, it's not in the, it's not in the, the renter's best interest to allow rent payments to go unpaid for too long, right? So a big part of the outreach has been around encouraging renters to continue paying what they can and making it very clear that this moratorium is not a rent forgiveness program. It just allows a framework for them to work with their landlord to try to weather through these difficult times that we're in. And obviously, the shorter in duration that the moratorium is, I think it's in the best interest of everyone involved.
Well, and, and again, if we put in this date, which was part of this report and it, the state is October 17, 2020, this gets us past that July, that September 1st date where there's going to be some lifting of being able to have the courts open for the evictions that don't qualify for this. And then we can see what kind of impact that would have before we then have an, you know, an end date on this where people can think, well, I have until the very end of this ordinance and we don't have a date of the end of this ordinance. And it could be very misleading otherwise. So I'm confused of why we wouldn't want to do that and do the checks and balances as we go along. Because, you know, if you fall behind, you're going to fall behind tremendously if we're going to continue this rather than making sure we, we really know what we have because $100,000 is going to go fairly quickly if we, if we throw that out there without really knowing what the consequence is. If we keep putting this, this safety net shelter of everybody, we don't know how much of a consequence we have here. And I want to make sure, for me to feel comfortable with an ordinance, I need to have a definitive date for us having the opportunity to go back and make sure that the statistics are coming in, that we see that the state is happening there and that we can make sure that the accountability is there for this, this checklist of things. Because there are landlords that are waiting and we have tenants that are saying COVID and that's not necessarily the case. So we, I want to be very clear that those landlords that have tenants that are using this have the ability and resources that they need and that we don't have the tenants set up for failure for things extending this for a very long time in, in terms of seeking the resources. And that, so you, my, my point is, I, I want to ask for the date. I, I want to make sure that we have adequate language in there for the protection of both sides. Do you, do you want us to be putting these in so that all tenants are being notified before they get behind? I mean, should that be part of this process? Should we be including that to say, to be proactive, let landlords send us notice out when their next rent is due? I mean, should that be something we should be including, to make sure everybody's on the same page, if there is something that they're responsible for?
You know, the council to make, I'm sure that both Susie and Carlos could speak to what other agencies have decided to do with regards to the length of the moratorium. There was lots of conversation around what would be most appropriate. Obviously, staff has landed on the recommendation of having it tied to the length of the emergency. Council could certainly change that if you, if you chose to. And as I mentioned earlier, if the regulatory landscape changes and a bill does get passed, which it very well, very, very well may in the foreseeable future, it may result in staff coming back to take further action on the moratorium. So I hear your thoughts and concerns, Councilmember Kaufman Gomez. And the council certainly has discretion to make adjustments to that, if you so choose.
And one final question I have, Mayor, and that is, when the task force has had their conversations, what recommendations have they asked for to be put into this that aren't part of what we're getting for this report now?
So the, the recommendations before you tonight came directly from...
There he is. Sorry, I didn't know where the voice is coming from in the box. I do now.
Okay, so the recommendations before you tonight came from the last, our last meeting of August the sixth, where we discussed the rapidly changing situations, and the need to come back to council with a, some type of recommendation. And so that's where we got their concerns from both sides, and the recommendations before you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trina. Okay, Felipe?
My, my question was, I think Ari sort of asked the, what the timeline was that they had to give notification to the landlord. What was it that, that it was on the prior one that we had? Was it two weeks? Carlos said the tenant had to give the written notification? Was it written, an email before?
So the previous moratorium required landlords to get notice, so for the tenant to give notice to a landlord prior to the rent being due. And so the problem is that the first of the month gets there, tenants have issues before the rent is due, but they also have issues looking or seeking assistance. And so if by the first of the month, the tenant did not give notice to the landlord, they may not be protected. And so the task force, excuse me, discussed those events, and they thought that giving those tenants an extra seven days after the first of the month, after the rent is due, that would give tenants the extra time to either call one of the nonprofits, call the city, call one of our legal nonprofits, legal services nonprofits, so that they could get some advice on what to do. And so under the current proposed ordinance, giving the tenants the extra seven days to notify the tenants, that would allow more people to be protected under the ordinance.
Yeah, that makes sense, because I know that people, you know, I know stories from CRLA, people always wait on the twenty-ninth, Friday night, four-thirty PM to tell CRLA, you know, about this, what's going on. And my, my, you know, it's not really a question, but, you know, I really encourage that, all the outreach materials that you guys are going to do, the flyer, the radio, I really encourage to put a phone number, you know, you could do email, but really encourage a phone number as well for folks. And that's it.
Thank you, Felipe. I have three questions, Carlos. The first one, I need clarification. As was stated, the moratorium states that the tenant must notify landlord seven days before their rent is due, that they're not going to be able to pay on time. Does this mean that, because we're also requiring that they must submit documents to show that COVID has had an impact on them, so does that mean that those documents have to be submitted when they do the seven days?
No, and thank you for your question. So the seven days for the tenants to notify the landlord, that's the seven days after the rent is due. And so, and that could be a simple, it can be a text, it can be an email, it can be a formal letter. It can be something like a template that the Watsonville Law Center developed in a few months back, that the tenants can use just a simple language to let the landlord know that they will not be able to pay their rent, and the reason is because they have been affected by COVID-19.
But don't they have to show documentation of that?
They do, but that can come later.
Okay.
The first step is to notify the landlord.
Okay, okay.
And then they have to, they get the extra time to get, to get the pay stops, to get a letter from the employer, to get something from the school system, proving that they've been affected by COVID-19.
Got you. Okay, that answered my question. My second question is, the moratorium doesn't have any repayment plan. So does that mean that legally, a landlord can establish his or her own repayment plan?
That is correct, and that was one of the major discussions during the task force meetings. So what we learned from the task force members is that requiring a payment plan may work against the tenants. And so that it is better to allow the landlords and the tenants to develop a plan. Sometimes, if we tell them you have six months, a lot of times tenants may be unable to pay within six months. But some landlords, a lot of, and you know, this is a perfect time to give kudos and credits to our landlords. We have a lot of great landlords within the city. We don't have a lot of bad issues with them. But a lot of landlords, they're already working with their tenants, and they already have informal agreements. And so we hope that through this ordinance, that landlords and tenants continue making those agreements, so that if they fall behind one month, two months, that they have that latitude to make their own agreement.
But what if they don't come to an agreement, can the landlord just say, it will be due X?
Yes, potentially, if the landlord, so if someone is behind one month, two months, and then the the moratorium comes to an end, then that tenant is liable for that rent. I mean, the moratorium is not a forgiveness of rent. The landlord at that point can say, okay, you owe me this much. So the hope is that we, through all of the other resources available to renters, that we are able to help those renters, so that they don't fall behind.
Okay. Okay, my final question is, you're asking us for a motion to direct staff to prepare a hundred thousand dollars rental assistance. Well, I'm a landlord, I'm very fortunate that my tenant is able to pay his full rent. So that means I'm able to pay my mortgage, my flood insurance, my fire insurance, my taxes. But I would suspect there's some mom-and-pop landlords that with a reduced rent for any length of time, may end up in foreclosures. So my question is, as we're able to come up with funding for rental assistance to renters, are we able to come up with any funding for those landlords that might end up in having to go through a foreclosure?
Not, no, not at this point. I know that from the federal, at the federal level and state level, and even with our local credit unions, they are stepping in, they're helping homeowners with mortgage forbearance, and they're getting three or four months forgiven, or not forgiven, but delayed. But if it comes to that point, in the next, in the coming weeks, we can explore all of that. But for now, we have not entertained that. It would be, just to let you know, it would be a very expensive program.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, it's time for public input, both in English and in Spanish. So if we could start having our public comment at this point. Mr., this is your time to speak, please unmute your mic.
Okay, great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Honorable Mayor Garcia and members of the City Council, this is Victor Gomez, Government Affairs Director with the Santa Cruz County Association of Realtors, and also a member of your Housing Task Force Committee as well. First, I wanted to thank staff, Susie and Carlos, for all of their work. Certainly not an easy issue to tackle, and they've done a fabulous job of walking the rope and not leaning one way or the other on the issue. So though we are opposed, as an organization, to this urgency ordinance, we understand it's likely, that it likely has the votes to pass. So with that said, we ask that you first place an actual sunset date, as Councilmember Kaufman Gomez had indicated. There is a high likelihood that legislation will pass, so maybe a date of November first would be a good, a good start to that conversation. Second, keep the requirement of the ordinance for actual proof of hardship. We have a number of tenants that are saying to landlords, I don't need to show you anything, I'm just not going to pay my rent. So there is some messaging that needs to be a little bit more clear. Additionally, our landlords don't have a way to defer mortgages that are not federally backed. We understand Carlos's points around some mortgages, but that doesn't cover all of them. And also to the points that you made, Mayor, those are extremely important. So if this is prolonged, you will see, you will probably begin to see mortgage defaults and a permanent loss of rental housing in Watsonville, and I don't think any of us want to see that. For that reason, we are grateful for the possible expansion of the rental assistance program. We really do believe that that's, that's very well-intended, and I think could be extremely helpful to the tenants in keeping them in there, but also landlords in keeping them, you know, with the ability to be able to make those payments. And it clearly sends a message to the community, including renters and landlords, that you are in their corner, and you really do care about this issue. So thank you all, we appreciate the time to chime in on this very important topic. I also, like Adriel's point about continuing the Housing Task Force, or the Housing Committee, whatever the new name will be, and these are really good conversations that are happening right now. Very emotional at times, certainly, but but more importantly, at least the conversations are happening, and we think that's very important. So again, thank you, Madam Mayor, really appreciate your time and the council for the consideration of these points. Have a good night.
Thank you, Victor, for your comments. Moving on to the next one.
Hello, can you hear me?
Who is it?
Hi, this is Clint Bond.
Who?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Watsonville Community. My name is Clint Bonds. I am a staff member at Court Appointed Special Advocates of Santa Cruz County. Although currently, we're working from all over the county, our office is at eight-one-three Freedom Boulevard in District Five of Watsonville. Our organization primarily works with children who are in foster care, but we also advocate for all children when situations arise which present a hazard to their well-being. And this is why we're advocating for the council to approve the extension of the eviction moratorium. Children in Watsonville have had to undergo an incredible amount of stress due to the COVID pandemic. They know people who have gotten sick, their access to their teachers, their friends, and their extended families has been limited. Some of their parents have lost their jobs. Children have been exposed to a great deal of stress that has arisen from a source they cannot control. Now that the state's protections for renters are set to expire, it's important that the city re-adopts their own local protection against evictions during these extraordinary times. Children cannot control if they are displaced due to evictions during COVID-19, but this council can help bridge the gap a little longer until things get better, students are able to get back to school, and parents are able to get their jobs back. Thank you for this consideration of this topic.
Thank you, Clint. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Mr. Tito, here, this is your time.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Carlos for all your work in the task force in doing this, and also thank Victor Gomez for participating in Clint Bonds and Victor being on the task force. This is so, you're all right, this is an incredibly emotional issue. Fortunately, I own my own home. I do want to point out that of all of the lending institutions in the county, Bay Federal is the best. Dump the big banks, go with Bay Federal. And I'm sorry if this appears like a commercial. I don't get paid for them or anything, anyway that way, but I happen to know they are the best place to go get a home loan. Now, that being said, Victor, I would disagree that November first is the best date to end this. I think it needs to be extended to the end of the year, because COVID-19, even though we have fewer cases than we had here in both Watsonville and Santa Cruz County in California, it's not going away anytime soon. The vaccine isn't going to be ready by Christmas, sorry, you know, and Trump thinks it is, well, he's wrong. And even with the antibodies, antibodies solution from the blood, even that is not going to end an awful lot of cases that were unfortunately going to end in fatalities, because we now are up to seven, I believe, in this county. And unfortunately, I'm afraid it's going to climb even more before the end of the year. It's a hundred thousand dollars is a decent amount, but it's probably going to go higher. Can you imagine sixty-six families suddenly having to be evicted and move into the community? I mean, to think of the chaos this would bring with sixty-six families, and all of their belongings and furniture scattered throughout the city, that is nuts. We cannot afford that kind of mayhem, and it frankly is a form of mayhem, to occur in this city, which prides itself on home, both homeownership and those who are renters to be able to live in their rented homes or apartments. We have to respect that, and as Clint said, and Clint, you're absolutely right, being a cost advocate, it's like when you are a child that's basically doesn't have parents or a stable family, the last thing you need is to be dumped into the homelessness world where you're trying to find a place just to sleep, or eat, or get help if you're sick. Remember, we have to remember, three out of every five community college students in California doesn't have health insurance enough to eat, or a reasonable place to stay overnight or for any length of time. So, let's go with the end of the year, and let's pass this bill.
Thank you, Steve, for your comments. Moving on.
Yes, I just want to remind members of the public that are calling from a phone to dial a star nine in order to raise their hand if they wish to speak on this item. And next is Emily Hamm, allowing you to speak. Unmute your phone.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Hamm. I'm with Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. And for those of you who don't know us or are not familiar, we are an organization that consists of over eighty-seven public, private, and civic entities as our members, and we are located throughout Monterey, San Benito, and Santa Cruz Counties. And since the onset of COVID-19, we've really expanded our scope of work to include the stabilization of rental and housing markets during the state of emergency. We've regularly facilitated working groups of stakeholders from across the region, and have developed a COVID-19 housing response framework, which aims to mitigate the health and financial impacts of our region's most vulnerable renters, property owners, affordable housing developers, and financial institutions. And within this framework, we offer two recommendations for preventing widespread eviction of residents who have been financially impacted by the pandemic. One is to mobilize emergency rental assistance funds, and two is to support moratoriums on evictions and foreclosures if needed. And I would just note that the order of these two things is very important here. We believe that the first line of defense really should be rental assistance, and understand and recognize... And understand and recognize that eviction moratoriums are not ideal for anyone. Of course, we are looking at projections of possible evictions. It's very hard to come by data on evictions for reasons that Carlos has mentioned. With the state protections being in place, they're just not being processed right now. But our insights from these groups and analysis of data from United Way 211 reports suggests that there is a growing need for rental and legal assistance for renters. So we know that that need is there and we support the staff recommendation to implement this moratorium and also to develop a COVID-related rental assistance program. So thank you so much. We understand this is a really difficult issue and we commend the attention that you've given to it and the outreach efforts that you've conducted to both renters and property owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily, for your comments. Okay, moving on. John.
Hi, yes, I'm John Subraniam with the Watsonville Law Center. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I submitted along with 21 other organizations, recommendations for an eviction moratorium to be enacted by this council. Many of the organization cosigners wrote what they're seeing in the community and hopefully many of them will be testifying tonight. But the gist of it is this, the importance of keeping our residents housed during this pandemic is paramount, and it's at the forefront of many residents' minds. Please take a look at our recommendations, as I can only speak to one or two of them right now. Many of them are copied from other county ordinances and pending state legislation. I first wanted to frame the options here. The ideal scenario is that Watsonville enacts a total eviction freeze, just like the Judicial Council did in April. The compromise is to restrict the protections to only tenants who can demonstrate a COVID-19-related financial hardship. But we need to take measures to ensure that everyone who should be protected is protected. So there's been some discussion tonight about the issues with tenants getting notice and how the city will do that. We think the best option is that landlords must give notice to tenants anytime the landlords give tenants notice that they're late in their rent. So landlords should notify their tenants of the rights under the ordinance, and they should also include an attestation form that the tenant can fill out stating their COVID-19-related financial hardship. Once the landlords give the tenant this information, the tenant should have 30 days to get that form back to the landlord, and the reason for this is twofold. Many tenants don't know about deadlines until it's too late, we saw with the previous ordinance. The other is that documentation is hard to come by. For some people, it's easy, an email from their supervisor, but many residents in Watsonville work in an informal employment agreements. They may not receive written notifications, pay stubs, and they might not even have bank accounts. Another recommendation is the repayment plan. We think it should be extended for a 12-month period. It gives time for tenants to get back to work and for landlords to take advantage of state programs. I want to finally highlight a big issue. Any state bill helping to solve this problem will not go into effect until January 1st. All protections for tenants will end in only seven days. This makes a four-month gap of greatest need where the only protections for tenants will be this Watsonville ordinance. You cannot have the moratorium expire on a random date. At the very least, extend it through the new year, but tying it to the state of emergency is the best option, as staff recommended. Please pass this ordinance with the most accessible and protective measures that you can to avoid a catastrophe from unfolding, which is compounded by the displacement during these wildfires right now. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for your comments. Moving on.
Mayor, I don't see any more members of the public wishing to speak at this time.
Are there any Spanish speakers that wish to speak?
They're all, all the speakers are on the same room, so there's no one else that is wanting to speak at this.
Got it. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council.
One second, one second, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think I saw a hand go up. Is there someone else that wants to speak on this issue? It might have been a glitch. Okay, nothing else.
No? Okay, so I will bring it back to the council. And so for further discussion, let's have the first of two motions, and the first motion is to adopt the urgency ordinance enacting a temporary moratorium. Would somebody like to make a motion? Aurelio?
I'll make the motion and follow staff's recommendation.
Okay, and Felipe seconded. Okay, let's have some discussion and we'll start the discussion with Ari.
Mayor?
Yes?
Are you doing this separately or are you doing both in one motion?
Well, let's go back to Aurelio. Do you want to put both motions together?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with both.
Okay, and then the second, Felipe, are you in agreement? Okay, so we'll do both motions together. Okay, and so Ari.
Could you go back over what the exact length of time this is for in this? Maybe answer that question.
There is no length of time.
This isn't till the emergency is been declared over. Or actually until, also, the other caveat is the state or the federal come in and bring assistance. And if there's no more need for a moratorium, as the city council, we can come back and readdress this issue. And if we don't need a moratorium, then we can repeal it at that time. But otherwise, it stands until the emergency is declared over.
And I'm concerned with the mom and pops. I really am concerned with the mom and pops, their landlords, and whether they have two tenants or whether they have 10 tenants. If we don't have anything in place to support them, maybe Matt can answer that. Is there anything federally or anything that could support them?
Your councilmember Parker, as Carlos had mentioned, there is work underway at the federal level and the state level to try to provide some relief to landlords, mostly in the form of providing some mortgage deferment relief. We acknowledge that these are hard interests to try to balance, and again, we want to acknowledge that the vast majority of our landlords are responsible landlords and are already working with their tenants in good faith to work out agreements for those that haven't been able to pay. Our hope is that this moratorium will be as limited in scope as it needs to be. And as soon as there is state legislation, and there will likely be state legislation in the near future, if the moratorium is no longer needed, we will return back to the council to take further action. So we monitor that closely. Part of the staff recommendation to reestablish the Emergency Housing Assistance Program was aimed at trying to balance the restrictions that the moratorium puts in place, but also provide some safeguards that ultimately end up benefiting the landlord as well. And as we mentioned, the way the program is administered, if a tenant is successful in being rewarded, funding under the program, that's money that goes directly to the landlord. That's how it's structured to ensure the money's going to the right place. So again, we acknowledge the tough tension between trying to balance the interest of tenant and landlord, and really, it's being done within the spirit of these challenging times in the pandemic we find ourselves in and trying to keep people housed.
Any more questions, Ari?
No, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. We'll move on to Trina.
Yes, I won't support the motion without having a date, which is how it was discussed before. And based on this report from the city staff and referencing the state, we have a date that's in there. It doesn't mean that we will eliminate ourselves from revisiting this, but without having a finite date of having an opportunity to visit this and know what the duration is or be able to come back on this, I will not support this motion. And I also want to know more about where this money is going to come from. We're saying the general fund. We have a, you know, four to $6 million deficit here. Are we going to be taking out the $200,000 for the social service grants in advance for the other social services that we've contributed $200,000 a year towards? I don't know where this money is going to come from. I want to know where that's going to come from. I know that we can be efficient with our administration for it. We have, out of the 66 families, we had 100,000. Was 15,000 of it administrative to CAB in terms of what our math was on allocating the number of certificates out there, grants? So that's one of my questions for you, Carlos. Is that about it? Is the CAB retained about $15,000? So that would have been another, maybe 10 families or, you know, nine families we could have helped. So by doing it in-house, that's going to save some costs for us. So okay, so where's this money going to come from that we're voting on to say that we're going to, you know, look at? I mean, I don't see any money allocated in terms of dollar amount. In principle, I see that we're going to do something, but do something with what?
So, top and comes like that real briefly. So to your point, yes, there was some administrative overhead related to the administration of the program for the first round. We are working on plans to bring the program in-house so we could be as efficient with that funding stream as possible. Also gives us a little bit more control over making sure that we are structuring the program to ensure it's available to all those that may seek access to it. In terms of the funding stream, Cindy is working on putting together a cost allocation plan for, excuse me, an allocation plan for the direct stimulus funding that the city received. It's about $630,000. And that was reflective of funding that came through the federal stimulus package that we can use on COVID-related expenses. There's been quite a bit of that work that we've incurred and costs that we've incurred over the last several months, much of which the general fund has borne the brunt of. So the plan is to try to work on balancing the use of the stimulus funding, which will make some general fund available that we can allocate to this program. So we'll bring more details on that when we come back to you at your next meeting, including an update on where the budget is year-to-date, including where the revenue streams are year-to-date, as we promised to do that quarterly going forward, and the program will be part of that conversation.
So I can see that we ask staff to go and do this work to let us know, but to arbitrarily say, yes, go get it, and we don't know where we're doing it from. I still have my reservation on that. So if I were looking at this as a motion, I would say that I direct staff to bring us something back that we have the ability to evaluate, assess, and vote on, not to say we're approving it without knowing what that is. I mean, this is, this is an open checkbook that we're approving by saying, staff, go do this. We don't know the money, we don't know the resources, we don't have all of those details. I would give you the assignment so that you can go work it and bring it back to us to vote on it, but not arbitrarily just say, yes, we're going to do this program and not have all of the details.
Yeah, so Councilmember Kaufman Gomez, I appreciate those points. That is the direction we're seeking today, is to direct staff to develop the program and come forward with the formal budget allocation approval. You still reserve, as does the full council, the right to decide at that point in time whether or not you want to fund the program and move forward with re-establishing it. Tonight, the action that is included that you are considering is whether to direct staff to come back with that formal approval, and that'll be part of the budget package at your next meeting.
So the other procedural question that I have here is, that's not an emergency. So having both of these put together under the same motion, should they be? Because having that not be emergency that we vote on to say, go to staff and bring it back to us is not part of an ordinance, but as a to-do thing. Should that be separate so that the emergency part of this ordinance is the vote of five members and the other being the majority of council? Can we figure out what is the most logistical way we're doing this in terms of process?
So procedurally, you can action on both motions at the same time. The ordinance is the emergency. It is the urgency element of your approvals tonight, but it does not prohibit the council from also approving the direction to staff to come back with the budget allocation and re-establishing the housing program. There's nothing to prohibit the council from doing so if you choose to do so tonight.
So hypothetically, if there was a four-vote motion, one part of it would be successful and the other part would not. That would be the case in the way we would process that through? Yes. All right. Yeah, I still feel strongly that we need to have a date in there. I don't care that we revisit it. I think this is a priority. I don't, I don't, if I'm a tenant and I'm that far behind, I want to make sure that I don't drag it so far out that, you know, they do become homeless and they go beyond the scope of what we have the ability to work with through these organizations. And another concern that I have about here is the seven-day mark. We normally have a five-day grace period. So the rent is due on the first, it's late after the fifth of the month. That's five out of the seven kind of grace period that you're talking about here. And I still don't have any tangible information about, then they can go bring the paperwork back in, but we don't have that rectified. So to me, it's a little squishy on saying that we have this emergency ordinance and they have to follow this. And the tenant comes back and goes, well, I told them day seven, and I tried to get my paperwork, and there's no definitive date on the landlord's side of, okay, you have the cutoff to get it to me. Otherwise, I have that course of action to take. So I'm still unclear that we have enough language refined so that there are proper steps and procedures that tenants know that they have to follow. And to say, well, in 30 days, maybe they can get their stuff together, that's not sufficient. All of these things are of urgent matter if there's a roof over their head. So I think that we still need to have some dates defined in there of, even if it's within the seven-day window, there's got to be something that says, and then the follow-up on any kind of documentation, another stopping point there for collecting the data. So I still feel reserved about doing this without a definitive date and have more language in there that better defines the document turn time necessary for the tenant to provide to the landlord upon notification.
Thank you, Trina. Moving on to Felipe.
I think a lot of the comments have been said earlier before, you know, I think this is important time to do this right now during this time right now. You know, I think right now with the loss of that unemployment insurance and with, you know, people losing jobs and with, and we have our localized area with the fire and stuff, you know, it just compounds the pandemic that we're in. And it's important to create these safeguards and this safety net within our community. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we move this forward.
Okay, thank you, Felipe. Moving on to Lowell.
Thank you, Mayor. I do feel some urgency here, and I think that we do have a crisis, and it could turn into a great big crisis if we don't do the right thing or if we do the wrong thing. You know, the fact of the matter is that we have exceptionally sky-high real estate prices, and that drives rental prices. And so until we fix the supply and demand of housing, you know, we're going to continue to see this pressure, and if we don't attempt to do something, and things could go wrong in a hurry. And so I think that, you know, there is a crisis, and it's one of high real estate, high rental prices, and hey, folks don't make enough money here. That's another problem.
Thank you, Lowell. Okay, Aurelio?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is a difficult time we're living in, and especially with the fires that are happening. One of my fears that I have is that some of these folks that are going to be impacted by not being able to pay their rent wind up being evicted. And right now, some of these landlords will see an opportunity that they know that there's people that they need housing. And we'll jump on that opportunity to fill up that housing with a higher rent cost, and then it's creating a bigger problem. But going back to, you know, we really have to look at it in the sense of the Carlos said, that we have a lot of good landlords. And what that means is we have a lot of good landlords that are working with their tenants as they don't want to see their tenants leave because they've been, you know, dependent, dependable tenants have been paying their rent. And so that's a good part of this community, that they are working together, and we're not tying their hands. We're allowing it to proceed to work together. And by us not putting a And by us not putting a date, I think it helps us as a city, and it helps our staff overall. As it is, we're, they're being overworked, and to come back and rehash this out in a month or in a month and a half is, is unjust, and it's unjust to the community. Because, and then again, we put the community in limbo, like, well, what's going to happen in a month and a half from now? And, you know, and that's not fair. And, and, you know, we're trying to put as much safeguards as we can, and I know there's questions on the funding of it. Again, I think our city staff really looks at how we can use the funding, the best server community. And I think we need to move forward with this, and, and support our community and support our landlords the best we can. And like I said, I, I think it's really important that that task force continue to have conversations. Because this is not, you know, something that's going to go away right, right away. Right? That's all, thank you.
Okay, so we have a two motions on the floor right now. We have one about an urgency ordinance enacting a temporary moratorium of evictions. And the second motion we have is directing staff to develop an emergency rental assistance program to assist tenants affected by COVID-19. So, yes, Ari?
Um, Aurelio, would you be open to at least a recheck-in finite date of after the first of the year? Not a month or so, it's quite a few months from now?
Well, you know, the one thing that we can't forget is we, as a city council, can always bring it back at any time that we, we ask staff to do bring it back. This is not going to be
I'm not forgetting that, Aurelio.
And so, and that's why, that's why, you know, it's the, the date is really insignificant. Because it's something as a city council can, can bring it back. I mean, you know, I, I understand landlords, they, they want a date, they want to be able to have a date. But it's, it's kind of, you know, November first, we look at it, and then what are we going to do? Are we going to be able to have to go to emergency meetings to be able to pass an extension on the moratorium? And then we're back in the same position?
I'll be like, what's your name in Congress? Climbing back my time? Um, so, so you're not open to putting a date of after the first of the year? Because I think that's plenty of time. We'll hopefully have a new president, we'll have new funding, things will happen. And, and it's also balancing our community. It's saying we care about everybody right now. It's, it's important.
If, if, if we look, maybe I'm open for the February first, if that's what you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
If you're talking about February first, then I'm open to that.
Okay, how about after the first of the year, January?
Okay, let, let me interrupt at this point. In terms of dates, right now, we've got two motions on the floors. If you want to add a date to it, there has to be a motion to add that date, and then there has to be a second to that motion, and then we have to go through the process again of discussing that motion. So I just want to clarify that. Lowell?
Mayor, I may have lost track of what's going on here, and sometimes I do. But it was my recollection that the maker of the motion and the second of the motion combined both these questions together.
That, that's correct, and what I said is to try to clarify, because Ari asked and Trina beforehand, but Ari asked about putting a date. And what I'm saying is, if you want a date added to the motion, you have to make a motion to do that with a second.
So, so the motion is to, to combine
Yeah, that's already been done. That's already been done, Lowell. That's already been done. Now, it sounds like Ari wants to make a motion.
A motion to amend.
A motion to amend, right.
On the eviction moratorium?
On the eviction moratorium, yeah. A motion to amend, amend the date that we, that it pays out, and we need to, let's put the difference, January fifteenth.
January fifteenth? Two thousand?
Two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? No second to that motion?
That makes it simple. There you go.
It fails. Okay, so back to the original. Oh, yes?
Excuse me.
I'll call the question already.
Councilmember Kaufman Gomez, last connection. I do not know if you want to wait. I, I told her that she could call in, but I
Well, I'll call the question already on that motion, on the old one.
Well, I'm sorry, she lost connection, she needs
Yeah, we can wait, we can wait, we can wait until she comes back on. So is she coming on?
Hold, hold on, she needs to get the number.
Oh, okay. Is she having trouble coming on?
I needed to send her the phone number.
Madam Mayor.
Okay. Yeah. So is she coming on?
I don't know.
Madam Mayor, can I, can I?
Go ahead, Aurelio.
You know, I had a moment to, to think this out a little bit. I'd like to second Ari's motion.
Okay, you'll second?
January fifteenth.
Oh, okay, so there's been a, a new motion, which is to amend the first motion to include a date of January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The motion was made by Ari, Aurelio seconded. Any further discussion on this motion? We'll start with Felipe. Do you have anything to say?
Can we just call the question?
Lowell, Lowell, you have any, anything to say on this motion?
I think I'm ready to say yes.
Okay, then, well, then Aurelio, Trina is the only one that's missing, and she's not available. So let's take a roll call on this amendment.
Kaufman Gomez? Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
This is to the date, right? No?
First?
This is on the date?
Yes.
Well, I don't know what to say about the date.
Yes or no?
Oh, I'll, I'll say no on the date.
Okay.
Parker?
Uh, yes?
Garcia?
No. So the motion failed, two to, two to three. Okay, going back to the original motion. Was this temporary moratorium and evictions and directing staff to develop an emergency rental assistance. Let's have a roll call on that.
Kaufman Gomez? Estrada, I'm sorry. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Garcia?
Yes, motion passes four to one.
Well, the ordinance, the ordinance does not pass, it requires five affirmative votes.
Oh, that's right, so it doesn't pass. You're right. Yeah, it's a four to one, because Trina's not on and, and Paco's not on.
We can count.
So, okay, thank you, you're right. Okay, so the motion has failed, okay? Moving on, we were going to go now to ten B. And ten B is the consideration of adoption of urgency ordinance adding chapter twelve, title for public safety of the Watsonville Municipal Court to provide lower-level remedies for violation of public health orders. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Alan Smith, the city attorney. This is a proposal to adopt an urgency ordinance, adding a chapter to the municipal code to lighten the possible penalties for violation of the county and statewide health officer order to make them less stringent and hopefully give the, those in the field a little better opportunity to administer them. So, and this is a five, required five votes as well. So state and local public health orders have been issued to combat COVID-19. We all have know about them, the face mask orders. And they emanate from state statute. There's a state statute that says local health officers, the safe health officer can do that, and a violation of it is a thousand-dollar fine. There's no options, one thousand dollars, and a potential of a, I think it's six months in jail. Our municipal code does not give police or others a alternative to enforcing that. So the council, excuse me, the municipal code has enforcement procedures for less stringent, less serious violations of county or city ordinance. And for example, your code enforcement, violations of littering, all types of things. And the city officials typically can do it either with a, by an infraction, which is treated like a parking ticket, very similar, or they can do an administrative citation, like you commonly see with somebody who's violating the building code. Under either situation, we're proposing that instead of a first offense being one thousand dollars, the first offense is one hundred dollars. And that the second offense is two hundred dollars, and the third offense, if hopefully there wouldn't be one, it would be five hundred dollars. And it can be done either through the infraction process or by the administrative citation process. The administrative citation process could be used by any of a variety of people in the city, typically in public works, the police, code enforcement, a variety of people. And infractions can only be issued by the police department. Like a ticket. If COVID-19, as we all know, it's a serious danger to health, safety, and welfare. And we've seen an ordinance substantially the same as this one adopted by Monterey County, City of Salinas, City of Santa Cruz, County of Santa Cruz, and many other jurisdictions just in the last few months. So we are not alone in this proposal. We also know that increased use of masks around the country is believed to be, as I understand it, one of the factors that is, is helped a little bit in flattening the infection rate across the country. And so we're proposing this ordinance to be added to the municipal code to be used during this pandemic, and heaven help us if we have other ones, it could be used in those situations as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, so this is time for city council clarifying technical questions, and we start with Aurelio.
Madam Mayor, I have none.
Okay, Trina?
Sorry, Mayor, can I wait till the end? Because I didn't catch all of the presentation, having, having had to reboot everything back up again. So I want to hear more questions, and then I'll come back at the end.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, sorry.
Okay, Lowell?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm, I'm still pretty occupied by the last motion, and I'm wondering if we can't go back and, you know, I, I would, you know, maybe one of the prevailing parties could ask for reconsideration. I'd be glad to take a
No, we're now on a different agenda item, so we have to stay to this agenda item. Do you have?
Okay, I'll, I'll see if I can do that. You know, we've gotten several letters from people saying, oh, we, we don't want to wear a mask, we have our, our independent right to not to wear a mask, and you can't make us wear a mask. I don't want to fine them a thousand dollars, but I think that they should have some consideration for other people and, and be more than willing to wear a mask. And if there was some lesser penalty, we might be able to enforce it in a higher level, and so I think we should probably move forward on this item in a, in a positive way, too.
Okay, thank you. Ari? Are you there, Ari? Nope, she's, she's not there. I have a question. I wanted to know, Alan, for how long will this ordinance be in effect?
Until you change it, Mayor.
Oh, okay, so it'd have to come back to us to change it.
Right, it's the ordinance in the municipal code, it stays in effect until the council changes it. It just adds a chapter to the municipal.
Okay, Ari, did you have any questions on this agenda? I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, nature called, so, but I listened to it, and I have no questions at this time.
Okay, back to you, Trina. You have any questions now?
Yes, thank you. Can you remind me again the, the fine escalation?
One hundred dollars for the first violation, two hundred dollars for the second violation, five hundred dollars for the third violation.
What kind of staff resources will take to do this and repeat? Because I, you, we, you know, we see the kids in the parks, and we see, are, are they under the age of twelve? I mean, what age are we going to be fining? So how, how we define that when we see that there's maybe a teenager without a fine, to know whether, are they a minor, so they don't get fined? What's defined about something like that on this?
The fine is of anybody who violates the state order, so you go to the state order. If the state health officer in his or her infinite wisdom decides the age is six, the person who's in the field who could administer the order will decide whether they're six or not. If the state order or the county health officer order is fourteen, then it's fourteen. This is not creating a new violation, it's creating a new remedy that's less stringent than the one that's there now. It's making it so it's less onerous for people.
But we're still charging more money, it seems, than what we had.
Right now, it's one thousand dollars. So for the first violation, so it's ten percent of the first violation. The second violation would be twenty percent of what it is right now. The third violation would be fifty percent of what it is right now, so it's drastically less.
So Councilmember Kaufman Gomez, if I could just add to that, without this change, if our officer were to enforce a violation of the health order, it's a misdemeanor. It's a thousand dollars, a pretty stiff penalty. Of course, enforcement has been our last resort. We've put a lot of effort into education, outreach, trying to reach voluntary compliance, but there have been cases in which enforcement is necessary. This gives our officers more tools at their disposal so that it's not immediately a misdemeanor, a thousand-dollar fine, when the circumstance doesn't warrant it. Our officers are already out there, so the resources are no more than what they are today. But it does allow, it does allow our officers to use this additional set of fees to try to gain compliance in some of the areas where we are struggling to do so without having to issue such a penalty as a thousand dollars.
So a fourteen-year, and again, I don't So a fourteen year, and again, I don't know, I'm sorry, I missed the part about the age limit of the threshold that's currently now. Is it fourteen or twelve? Because it's changed on the, the age of the person required to wear the mask.
I didn't say anything about the age of the mask that discussed the state health order. The state health order is what it is. The state health order may change over time. You could pass this tonight when it's fourteen and the state health officer could say, you know, we've got some really serious problems with three-year-olds and they could lower it, the same fine. Now, is a person going to, the officer going to write a ticket for a three-year-old? Probably not.
But my, my point being, since I don't have that age and you're saying that it can change. Hypothetically, you have a fourteen-year-old and you're going to cite them. How, what's the enforceability of receiving anything other than him getting a ticket? And he's going to just toss it on the ground and, you know, take off on a skateboard. What do we have that is actually, you know, sure, we can go out there and remind them, but are we going to be looking to cite fourteen-year-olds if that's what the law reads?
I, I would say that would be up to the law enforcement people in the field. If they go up to a group of people and they say, you're not going to give me a citation for a thousand dollars. I know you're never going to do that, so screw you, get out of here. If they go up, the officer goes up and says, hey, I'm going to write you a ticket for a hundred bucks. They may all take off on their skateboards, which is fine. They've stopped congregating and they've stopped wearing, they started wearing masks or gone somewhere else, they've separated. So this is, this doesn't change any of those issues. It just makes it so it's easier for the law enforcement to gain compliance. That's what the goal here is. Does it change what is or is not a violation? That is up to the law enforcement officer applying state law or county ordinance.
And what happens with the funds of the, that would be collected in a situation like this? Where, where do they go?
Okay, so it depends on what they're cited for. If it's decided as an infraction, it goes the same place your parking ticket goes in the same proportions. If it's administrative citation, it goes into, I believe, the general fund and reimburses for the cost of enforcement.
So the, the parking, the parking violation goes where? Because you said that that.
Parking violation, I don't, that would be a question really for Cindy of where the money goes when it's deposited. I believe, first of all, after the county extracts their money and the state extracts their money and the financing fees and the clerk's office and all those people extract their fees, there isn't much left. But whatever is left, it comes back to the city. And I quite frankly, don't know what finance does with it.
I mean, obviously, it, it's a means that if there were funds available to go right back into PSAs and, and letting the, the public know about this. And, and again, it, it goes on until, until we lift it?
It's the municipal code, municipal code amendment. So it's like any other municipal code change you make, housing, cigarettes, anything, it goes on forever. And but at any point, any council can come back and change it, just like Aurelio was talking about earlier.
But we wouldn't tie this to what the COVID state emergency would be so that it's because of that we have this language in here.
We want to, we want to have this available as a tool immediately. Who knows? I don't know what's going to happen in the future. And so the thousand dollar fine is a hindrance to getting people to comply. By reducing the thousand dollars to one hundred dollars, it's believed by the county of Monterey, the county of Santa Cruz, the city of Salinas, the city of Santa Cruz, a whole bunch of other cities and counties around the state, that this is a more effective way to gain compliance and make people wear masks without unduly penalizing them. You don't have to give person a thousand dollar fine, you can give them a hundred dollar fine. They say, gosh, I better comply. And officers are reticent, I believe, to write somebody for a thousand dollar fine where people are out of work and all sorts of other things. So this makes it so we maintain public health by making it so encouraging people to wear masks without punishing them unduly. That's the theory behind it, as I understand it.
Okay, are there any final comments, questions on this? Did we make a motion already?
I, I don't think so.
Oh, no, because we have to do public input. Thank you. Okay, so now it's time for public input, both in English and Spanish. Is there anybody wishing to address the council on this topic?
Yes, Mayor, there is.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Steve Trillo, seven, seven, four, Bronte Avenue in beautiful Paro Village in District Seven. Ladies and gentlemen, it is ridiculous to believe in an era of fourteen percent unemployment in California with as many economic strains as there are, we just dealt with one that we decided not to deal with, and that's rental eviction, that you're going to, our WPD is going to be able to enforce a one thousand dollar fine for not wearing a mask. That is nuts. Let's rejoin the real world, pass this resolution and start with a hundred dollar fine for the first, for the first ticket, the first writing up. As the, as the city attorney says, in addition to this, if you find anyone under the age of eighteen, of course, it goes to their parent, they're a minor. They're not responsible for their, well, they are, they personally respond to their actions. But the responsibility in terms of financial, of the financial angle, it goes to the parent. So that means if it's a fourteen-year-old, that means the person who's going to get actually fined is the parent. Okay? So what we need to realize is this, that yes, a bunch of kids on skateboards who aren't wearing a mask, the likelihood of them is, when they're approached by an officer, the chances are very unlikely they're going to put one on unless, unless the police officer has fresh masks sealed in a cellophane that the officer can distribute to the people who he is accusing of not wearing a mask rather than write them a one hundred dollar citation. That just makes sense, folks. Let's rejoin the re-world of reality and see this for what it is. It's a pandemic, one, one hundred years in the making. There are a lot of kids who did not live a hundred years ago, unlike any of us did, and have to realize that this is a very strange situation, particularly for kids who are not adults and don't have or haven't had the ability to study well, US history passed for a hundred years. And frankly, that applies to more than a few adults who don't know anything about US history, including our president. Therefore, let's go with this, this very much needed motion. And let's get it passed and let's go on to the next thing on the agenda because it's ten o'clock at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Are there anybody else that would like to address the council?
I don't see any others, ma'am.
Does that include Spanish speakers?
Yes, correct, everyone.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. I'll entertain a motion. Yes, Felipe?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, but I got a quick question before.
Before you ask the question, is there a second? Okay, there's a second by Aurelio. Go ahead, Felipe.
Okay. How do we deal with under eighteen helmet violations? Like, do they scale up? Parents deal with the, the fine? You know, helmet violations for skatebo- skateboards or?
I, that would be a question, I think, for police, but my understanding is there's a bail, there's a, a fine and there's a bail schedule that's developed, Beatrice would know, bail schedule developed by the police department. And so you can bail based on paying the fine. Is that right, Beatrice? Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I don't know what the fine is, but.
Okay. We'll move on. Trina, do you have any questions? Okay, Lowell?
Excuse me, Mayor. My, I couldn't find the mute button again. No, I think I'm ready to vote and I want to make sure I vote correctly this time.
Okay. Aurelio, you have any questions?
No, just bring the question.
Ari? Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor made by Felipe, second by Aurelio. Let's have a roll call.
Kaufman Gomez?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
I keep wanting to hit the participants button. Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes, motion passes. We're now going on to more public hearings. And this is a consideration of time extension of tentative map track number sixteen oh seven and associated special use permit with design review and specific development plan for a period of one year to allow construction of one hundred and fifty dwelling units on individual parcels consisting of twenty-three single-family units, forty duplex-style townhouse units and eighty-seven row, row, row-style town, townhouse units on thirteen-plus acres at five, five eleven Aloney Parkway. So we start with a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and the public. My name is Justin Meek. I'm the principal planner for the city of Watsonville, and I'll be providing the staff report on this particular item. Just by way of an overview, I'll touch a bit on the approved project as well as background, what the time extension is about. The subject site went before the council two years ago when they applied for a redevelopment of what was formerly Cluster's Automotive Junkyard, as the picture there shows. The site, of course, is, as many of you remember, bounded by existing residential development and the Watsonville Slough and was formally designated as industrial land. When the developer approached the city, they proposed a residential development of one hundred and fifty units and obtained the entitlements to construct the project in the form of tenant maps as well as the development plan and special use permit with designer view. And that's the subject of tonight's consideration is to extend those project entitlements for extended period of time. Just to provide you what the approved tenant map looks like for your reference. It was for one hundred and fifty residential lots consisting of townhome and single-family developments, along with some common area parcels as too for various amenities distributed throughout the site. In addition to establishing public access easements for a new trail system to go around the site and so forth. Here's a site plan, the colored version, to help illustrate what the ultimate development was intended to look like. As you can see, along Street D, that's where the single-family homes were planned to go. And in between that and the surrounding streets, you have a series of duplex-style and row-style townhomes on small lots. As you can see, there's, there's towards the center of the site, there's some common open space that was planned as well as areas that overlooked the slough as well. And where open space areas, roughly in this location, you can see there's also connection to a future trail extension that would connect to the Watsonville Trail. As many of you remember, there was concerns from nearby residents about the access through the right-of-way into the site. And, and, and then, of course, there's a secondary fire access that would connect to the Sunshine Gardens subdivision that's currently under development. So the request here is for a tentative map. It was originally approved with a two-year timeframe. And it will expire unless there is a timely filed final map application within that timeframe. Now, per the city's code and government code six, six, four, five, two point six E, they may be extended for a maximum of another four years for a combined total of six years. One thing to keep in mind is that the other entitlements, such as the special use permit with designer view, that can only be extended for one year. And that's per our code itself. Now, the request that has been made by the applicant is to extend the tentative map for a four-year term, the maximum amount of time. And that was included as part of their applicant and attached to the staff report as attachment A. Or attachment one, I should say. And the reasons that they provided include the fact that we're, there's been unforeseen delays due to COVID-19. And that has made it challenging for moving forward with working on the project. And that the development agreement, which the applicant applied for early last year, needs some additional revisions and they don't think it can be finalized prior to the twenty-eighth, when the tentative map would expire. In addition, they noted that there's additional project managers that are being brought on to the project to help with this effort. And they're engaging what they call due diligence and peer review of the proposed plans. And that involves looking at everything from the geotechnical court to market studies, looking closely at the site grading and installation of retaining walls and their overall phasing of the project and getting their own cost estimate of what it would take to construct the entire project. And my understanding is that they're, they need time to do this and they're planning on doing so following the extension that may be granted tonight. Just so you understand what the next steps could be moving forward, provided that the entitlements are extended, include being able to submit for a final map to the city, including all improvement plans and security deposits, that would be a part of that. And then applying for a building permit, they would have, based on staff recommendation, a year to do that. Another scenario may include them working with the city to finalize the draft development agreement and enter into such agreement with the city that, of course, would come back to council as any development agreement would and would be adopted by, by ordinance. And with that, there could be phased development, including phases for when final maps are recorded in multiple phases and building permits could be pulled. That's part of the flexibility that a development agreement can offer. Just want to note that the overall project is consistent with the strategic plan in that it would provide one hundred and fifty new dwelling units. And the project was found to be consistent with the city's livable communities residential design guidelines. Therefore, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution granting one-year time extension for both the tentative map and the special use permit with designer view so that it would expire a year from the effective date on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
So this is the time for city council clarifying and technical questions. And the questions can be to Justin, I suspect the developer is present also. And so any questions could also go to the developer. So we'll start with Trina.
Does the developer, would the developer at all like to make any comment before I ask questions? Just to make sure, I know he's there for questions, but maybe there's something he just want to add to. I just want to be sure.
I believe Lisa Lee and John Fry are taking part, and I would imagine that they would like an opportunity to speak to council, too.
Okay. We're allowed to do that, so they can go on.
Juan, you may speak now.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi, this is Lisa Lee, and I appreciate the staff report. So I would like to actually turn this statement to John Fry.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm John Fry, and I'm the project manager for Landco Company Investment Group with Sunshine Vista, who are looking at joining into a joint venture. And one of the things that we were commissioned to do by Landco was to do the due diligence. We have completed that. We have, as of last week, we're moving forward doing value engineering on a number of items. And what we are, are project managers. And we take care of entitlements, design team, the construction. the construction.
We lost him.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So our experience in Watsonville includes Westgate Business Park, Meadowview Apartments, Apple Hill condominiums, and other major projects throughout the United States totaling about sixty-five-plus projects. I'm starting to beat you up. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So the last few months, we have reviewed, the peer reviews, all the work of the design architects, the civil engineers, the geotechnical, we've gone through contract estimates, and now we're trying to finalize this plan and move forward to start construction early spring. We, my ask tonight is that the tentative map be renewed for two years, not one year, and I'll explain why in a second, and a use permit, a special use permit and for design ru, design review, which is one year, and that is fine. The reason why is that, one, time is too short, things are just moving slower, and delays do happen, and I wanted to just take a minute and explain each one of those quickly. One of them is, is that we have a lot of work to do, and we've put a schedule together, and there's fifty-four scheduled items that need to get completed before the permit can be pulled. The city is responsible for nineteen of those items that they have to take. And when things move slower, we have this problem with our designers, and we have the same problem with the city. It's just things are slower. It's not people's fault. It just is that it appears we're all working at about a sixty percent efficiency. And so our concern is staging, if we have a problem in twelve months versus eighteen months or sixteen months, we'd hate to see this expire. And so we can go and do the things that we need to get done that would be affected by the special use permit and get them into the city to be reviewed and feedback. At the same time, we would want to get the development agreement done, and we also need to finish off a total grading plan for the site, not just one phase. The whole process requires what I would call a doing it the right way, a job that doesn't get done sloppily, one that takes care of everything. And so looking forward and advising Sunshine Vista and Landco, I'm saying, let's get it right, let's do what we did. We've got the things we've got approved and the mitigations, it's just we need to assemble those things, and the public works has to get back to us, the, the planning has to get back to us on some items and move through it. I think we can do it in twelve months, but I surely don't want to get caught. And so by having the twelve-month special use permit and two years for the development map, for the tentative map, which is still two years less than what is available to us in the ordinance, helps us get organized, step what we're doing, and deliver and do it right. And so I think there's benefits for both the city and for us. And I believe that for us, it's important that the investment group feels comfortable that they got two years on this to get it done, and then we're not going to run into a problem that's not necessarily our fault, it just happens, and therefore, we'd like two years. At the same time, we think the city has a lot to gain because there's just in-place project. I mean, this project is going to have impact fees we're going to pay of three-point-eight million, the city department fees are over three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, the affordable housing is a price reduction that totals five-point-seven million dollars with thirty homes that are affordable, and you have, that total comes out to nine-point-eight million dollars that goes to the city. And, and on top of that, you have what I call the ripple effect. These homes now will be generating property tax, they will be generating ongoing sales tax in this community. We just don't feel comfortable that we're going to face a one year and the, and the thing could go wrong because some engineers don't get something done, something else happens. And so we also think that it's important, it helps the council be seen as being positive about this project that's going to have thirty affordable units, and, and it's there, and it can happen, and it can happen sooner than any other project that might come down the line. And the counselor, the council and the developer both, we've got to have a successful project, not just one hundred and fifty homes. And so I think that in general, our plea is to say, it's a prudent thing, a prudent decision for the one year on the use permit and two years on the tentative map, and between the two of those, we should go forward, be in grading in the spring, and if there are a couple of things that are still hanging there on some of the permits for the houses, we can get those done in time and, and it keeps everybody not worrying about something hanging over us. Partners in this project don't want to see putting more money in and the fact that the time clock runs out very close or could, and that's part of the issue that we're asking for this extension. I'm open to questions from the council, and I turn my time over.
Thank you, John. Okay, well, go ahead and start with Trina.
Yes, staff, our ordinance reads that we can only do one year for the special use. What, what is the, the background for that? Can you explain why?
Why the ordinance was set for just one year? Most designer view permits, entitlement permits, they don't exist forever, so there's a typically a two-year initial period, and the city chose to set one year for the extension. That's what's set in the zoning code. Why they chose one year as opposed to, say, two years or whatnot? It's, I think generally speaking, that most communities don't entitle projects in perpetuity. They want to see things developed as they're designed, and things can change in the future. And so for, for, I think, all those reasons, it's unusual for those type of entitlements to be set in stone for a long period of time. Having said that, for large projects, there is the development agreement process in which timeframes can be extended, and it's a negotiation agreement between the city and the developer on the terms of building out a project over time, if, if that's warranted. And that's again what has been applied for, I think it was back in February of last year or so.
Now, given the circumstance that we've had these fires, do you feel that there might be an issue with getting some of the professionals on board because they may be out there working a lot of these projects for all of these burnt homes? Do you think that that would be, or could potentially impact what time is necessary for a project like this?
In terms of the construction trades or the designers for designing the project?
Well, I mean, you're going to have all the professionals from the ground up on building new houses because of the fires, and you're going to have a lot of the professional resources being taxed on that, whether it's the permit processes, you know, getting the, the engineers in, getting in the, the construction and all of the other professions lined up. Do you feel that that may also impact the turn times for this project and warrant the, the extra time requested?
Is that a question for staff or the, the applicant?
Well, this would be your question to you. I mean, do you think that that's a reasonable argument that we're going to have the resources that may be limited to be able to respond to, you have fifty-seven items or so? If they're going to be busy trying to rebuild houses and do other projects as a result of this fire that just happened or that's still going on?
Well, the construction trade, you know, there's been a housing boom on construction, and a lot of that has been drawn into the Bay Area. Depending on where there's been damage, you know, so far, there's approximately over three hundred homes in the Santa Cruz area that have been burnt down, and I would imagine many of those will be wanting to rebuild. So far, there doesn't seem to be any slowing down in the housing market or just a slight softening. So in general, there is a lot of demand for the construction trades. As far as the designers, I understand that this firm has their own team that's doing the peer review, so I, I would defer to to, to applicant in addressing whether or not they have the adequate professional staff to, you know, to move forward with the plans. There are already some draft plans that are, been prepared when we were looking at the development agreement. It sounds like his team is looking at revising those plans, and staff has not seen the extent of those revisions yet.
And Susie, when was the last new house actually put on the market that we've had in Watsonville, just so that we have it for the public record?
Honestly, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I can probably give you an estimate of about two thousand and six. So a project that is going to be sold for inventory for the market, that's, that's bringing in a good ten million or more is definitely a project that we want to make sure that we're working alongside of to make sure everything gets mitigated and work through the details. So I'm just, again, I think I've finished my questions, and there may be some other comments that come out later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trina. Moving on to Felipe.
You know, I'm trying to think of the last time I remember, you know, a large-scale project or even a medium-sized project, and if any of them have, like, what was their timeline that they accomplished their project on? Was it, did they take a year or did they take a little over a year, or maybe did they take three years or something? I'm trying to recall if anybody remembers back past two thousand and six, maybe.
Well, I can't comment, I wasn't here with the city during that time on, like, CB Ranch in Las Prisas, how long it took for them to get entitlements and then to pull permits and construct. So I, I don't have that, those dates. And so, but again, it was, it was a different time, it was also a very strong market in building at that time, so. But I, I can't comment in comparison to what they're talking about now versus then.
You know, I think I recalled it, it, it took a little over, you know, three years for that project, you know? I, I remember Martin, Martin was the senior planner at the time, and from design charades to, you know, getting folks involved in that, in that process and to the final build, you know, it, it was a lengthy process, probably three years if not more. And, you know, I, I just, it's hard for me to, when I saw one year, I just, I couldn't imagine a project of one hundred and fifty units finishing in one year when, you know, it takes, you know, sometimes.
Clarify. Over a year. One year is just for the entitlements. Within that time, they would have time to record the final map, enter an improvement agreement and pull a building permit, and then that would start the construction phase. So it's not that they would have to be shovel-ready tomorrow and be constructing and have it done within a year. That would be for starting the construction or starting the, pulling the permits to be able to construct, that is to say.
Yeah, so they, they'd have to move forward with submitting for building permit applications and moving forward on that piece of it. The, the project does not need to be done in a year.
Okay, so are you done, Felipe? Okay, moving on to Lowell.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, I do have some memory of a project, a Franch project, and that turned out to be Vista Montaña, and it took decades. It took years and years, and I kind of remember this Seaview Ranch took a very long time, too, through several different owners and stages and such. And so this one may not be shovel-ready in the traditional sense, but my question for staff is, is there anything else out there that would give us this big number of affordable units or one hundred and fifty homes? Is there, is there something waiting in the wings that maybe I don't know about with LAFCO or some annexation or something to bring more housing to Watsonville? Because I think that's what we're, we've had some discussion on this evening is the housing crisis and how we are not caught up with the, the supply hasn't caught up with the demand yet.
Right.
Right.
Well, what I would offer is that you asked the question whether there's some areas or perhaps places that might be annexed. The direction that we're focusing more on is infill, and as part of the downtown specific plan, there's a lot of infill potential that could be accommodated within the city limits near downtown itself. We've had some rough projections, and it could be on the order of thousands of units that could become online through that planning outfit. So this is one, I wouldn't say greenfield, it obviously is a brownfield where there's cleanup efforts because of the former auto repair yard and junkyard, and so while a lot of those cars have been removed from the site, there's still cleanup efforts, and so that's part of the challenge of developing this specific site. But unlike in the past where there were efforts to look at the Buena Vista area and the Acusson Lane area, those efforts are not ongoing right now, and so we're really looking at accommodating growth within the city limits.
So that was kind of a long answer for, no, there isn't any other spot right now. This is, this is kind of the, 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 the future of housing, if there's going to be a future of new homes in Watsonville.
Well, this is, you know, adjacent to an existing housing development, so the fact that it's being converted from industrial to residential makes us a lot of sense, and that was part of the reason why the Seaview Ranch subdivision included the right-of-way for a future road extension into the site, envisioning that over time, it could become a, an extension of that residential neighborhood. And so that's part of the reason why I think, why it was supported by council and that it's a good site for developing this housing.
Well, I just want to say how difficult it is to get anything done, and it's not just the city of Watsonville, it's, you know, in the entire central coast is that, you know, there are people that don't want anything to happen, and then there, but there's a tremendous need for something to happen. And seems to me that if, you know, nobody can predict the future, or, you know, when finances are going to fall out of somebody's project or some international trade war will disrupt something, or that projects just take a long time inherently, let alone anything of this, this size or, or with this potential to, to bring a little bit of relief to the housing market in Watsonville.
Okay, thank you, Lowell. Moving on to Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I, I need some clarification here. We're calling this the Sunshine Gardens, and I think I recall that Lisa Lee renamed it the Hillcrest Vista. So are we, is this, is this going back to the Sunshine Gardens and trying to do that again? Or are we looking, yes, that's, I have a problem with that because this is, this is one of the problems that we've been having with this developer, that, that they've been coming up with a lot of excuses, and we didn't realize that the fence had to be this tall, and, and the architect, if we don't get this done, and we don't move dirt, this project is dead. And, and it continues to come back to us, and, and my biggest fear is that, do I understand this correct, that the people she's partnering with is the one that's taking over the project that's adjacent to her?
So just to clarify, when it originally came to the city, it was called Sunshine Vista. Sunshine Gardens is the other project that's currently under development. Okay. No, I, my understanding is that they are not a part of Sunshine Gardens, and I think
Because the gentleman, the gentleman that just spoke said that they're doing Sunshine Gardens, is partnering and doing this project now. And so looking at Sunshine Gardens, and it's disaster, and the horrible contractors that were put up there and built these structures, and, and they're trying to represent the city of Watsonville and for housing. You know, I started two years ago, that was, this was my first meeting with housing, and I, and I was promising the community I was going to bring housing, but you know what? I'm going to be honest, I, I don't want to bring, approve crappy housing. I don't care how much we need it, and if it's a crappy developer, I think it's better to just tell them, you know what, take your losses and lick your wounds and, and move on. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, moving on to Ari.
So I want to go back to the question of time. This is one year in, in what staff is recommending, but they can have up to four years. But I heard.
But I heard, um, the gentleman was Mr. Frye, mentioned two years. Could we review that just really quickly?
Certainly. So there's two, when the project was approved, there's different kinds of entitlements that were approved. There was the tentative map, there was a special use permit with designer view. Those are two separate approvals. And they have different timeframes or different extension possibilities. Per state law and the city's ordinance, tentative map can be extended additional forty-eight months for combined total of six years. Whereas the designer review permit, that form of entitlement, may be extended per our code for only one year. And so to harmonize those, staff recommended a one-year time extension so that all the entitlements remain valid for the next twelve months.
Go ahead. I'll unmute myself again. Um, so for twelve months, but did I hear Mr. Frye then say that that's a difficult, they, they may be able to do it in twelve months, but based on everything that's going on in the county at this time or in the region, that he may, you know, might go over a little bit or whatever, but would like to have the buffer of two years? Is that what I heard?
Let me comment and then let me, like, try, um, speak on his behalf as well. Many investors, when they're looking at projects, they want to make sure that the entitlements are valid. And that's important for financing and moving forward with the project. And I think that's where he's speaking to, having that additional time. So they don't have to worry about the tentative map expiring and having to start anew. Cause there's obviously a risk associated with that. Uh, having said that, there's already an application with the city for entering into a development agreement. The development agreement, if entered into by the city, the council, would allow a range of things, including what they already let the city, city staff know what they, their intentions are, to build this out in four phases, which means that they would technically submit four separate final maps over a longer timeframe than one year, but multiple years. That's what they've asked so far. Obviously, there's some revisions that need to be made to this draft document. They, um, there's other things that they're working on that have delayed the process. And they want a little bit more time before bringing that forward for consideration by the city council.
Thank you very much, Jason.
Okay, uh, I have one question for the developer, Mr. Frye. Uh, you give two reasons due to COVID nineteen to request the extension. You originally were approved August two thousand, uh, eighteen. The COVID nineteen shelter in place did not go into effect until March two thousand and twenty, which is nineteen months later than when you were first approved. Why has nothing been done to move forward in this development during this past nineteen months?
Can I answer?
Yeah, that, that's a question to you.
Okay. Um, first, uh, I came on this project in March. Wasn't a good timing for me. The second thing is that when I, when I arrived, um, there was a lot of work done. Um, there was, uh, a final map for one phase. There was soils reports done, there was remediation reports done. Um, there was, uh, some site plans done. Um, there were some partial retaining walls done. And what happened is that they were not quite finished and part of the plans got turned into Public Works. Public Works took a look at it and twenty-six pages later of corrections they requested. And I'm not disagreeing about the corrections. I showed up on this project. And so it's not like no one did anything. They did a lot. The problem now is that the world has gone sideways. And then two weeks ago, the world in this county also went sideways the other way. And I'm sitting here and put me in the guy on the, on the leading point. And I've got to basically, like a conductor of an orchestra, I got everyone to play music together. And right now, everyone's got a lot of other worries of playing music the way I might suggest to get played. So all I've asked for is that within the ordinances that are already there, one year for the use permit and two years for the tentative, uh, map. This gives me some flexibility to do the things under each of those permits in different timing. Because frankly, the, um, civil engineer needs to improve his plans. And the architect has done a lot of work, but I can't build homes on property that the civil engineer needs to do reworking of drawings. Now, it's not like a ten unit subdivision. It's a hundred and fifty. And one of the problems I inherited is a management problem. And so everyone planned to do the first phase. And I said, okay, so where's the other phases, another hundred and eleven houses? And no one had a full completed set of plans. And no one who was a contractor priced all of the retaining walls, all of the roads and all of the houses. And I'm sitting here and I have to make the orchestra play. And I'm here tonight before you with the problem. And I think the problem is to have a good project, see, get planned together. I'm following within the ordinances, but I also have to bring along the rest of the orchestra. The civil, the geotechnical, the remedial. And there's some things that need to be done all at once because it would be a better project and less impact on all the neighbors. Called get all the grading done, don't do it by spy phases because it's problematic to the neighbors. Decisions were made, I can't speak to the old decisions, I can surely speak to the new ones. And I can tell you, my record stands there. It took me two years to get the project of Meadowview done. It took me four years to get the project done at West, uh, West Side Business Park. It took me two and a half years to get Apple Hill done. I have done fifty-six of these projects in the last thirty-five years. Everyone was successful, but everyone took time, everyone took understanding, understanding from councils and design review from investors. And that's what I do. And so that's why you're first in the step to hear of what I need to do. And I'm asking that, um, you help me. And that's all I have to say.
Then my, my question, my next question is to Ms. Lee then. Uh, you say that, uh, no one had a set of plans. So I want to ask Ms. Lee, why no one had a set of plans?
Wait, I didn't say a set of plans.
Yes, you did. I, I, I wrote it down. I wrote it down. That's what you said.
No, no. I said the plans were not fully completed. And some of the plans for one of the phases was completed. And this Lee got that done. She was relying on third party engineers and other people. And that's how they thought they could do the project. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I was brought in and said, that's one way of doing it, but it's not a good way of doing it. And to avoid problems and to avoid a project not getting fully done. I said, we need some time to complete the other phases of plans. So we know how they relate to the phase of the plans that got completed. That's what I hoped I had said correctly and I stand corrected now on what I've said.
You stand corrected because that's not what you said, because I wrote down every word you said. Okay, uh, this is a public hearing. And so this is time for the public to address the council on this topic. Are there any speakers?
Tomorrow, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Uh, I have a phone number ending in six, five, two. Uh, I'm allowing you to speak. Hello?
Yes. Go ahead.
If you press, press the star six, I think you will unmute your phone and then we will be able to hear you. We, we were able to hear you before. Let me find another person in the queue and then, um, you can try to unmute.
Are we going to be able to?
Uh-oh.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor Garcia, council members and staff. Um, thank you for your commitment to your, to our community and that all of each of you have been doing. I'd like to respectfully ask that you approve the extension of the tentative map for another two years. As we know, the effects of the pandemic will be felt for quite some time. The council has supported this project in the past. And as we all know, we're all going through this together like nothing that we've ever experienced. There have been huge budget impacts on the progression of so many projects, not just this one. But because of this, the project managers have not had the time to complete the items which are outlined in the sunshine request. This project will provide much needed housing and the opportunity for families to invest in our community, raise families and to enjoy our beautiful wetlands that will be built around. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration to approve this extension for two more years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chef. Okay, next one.
Go ahead, Steve. It's your turn now.
Thank you very much.
Steve, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I would ask the council to please approve the extension for two years. We need the hundred and fifty units. Uh, but of course, uh, two things in my view, they absolutely need to happen. And that is that horrific topsoil has to go and it's not going to be put in Monterey Bay. It needs to be put in a, an EPA, EPA approved toxic waste site because it's disgusting. No one on earth would want to live on top of that soil. Second, Greenpeace has said that California needs to plant at least a million trees in order for all the damage from the drought two years, two and three years ago, uh, to replace some of the oxygen supply. I am hoping that whatever this is going to be called, Hillcrest Estates or Sunshine Acres or, or Happy Meadow or whatever, whatever name they want to come up with, and I'm sure they will come up with a lovely name, got to have trees in it. We must plant trees. And if I may make a suggestion, California incense cedars, which are fire resistant, have a lovely aroma and are absolutely beautiful and grow to tremendous heights. And also are very durable in the strong winds, uh, or storms. So again, uh, I'm sure this will make a lovely project on Aloney Circle. I am worried about, still about the traffic issues. And where, where, where are we going to put our next elementary school? Hmm? Cause we're going to need to have one in just a few years because the ones we have are not going to be enough. So, uh, with that said, I really appreciate Lisa Lee hanging in there for all these years. God knows this project's probably given her gray hairs and wrinkles because it's taken a long time to get to this point, but it really is worth the effort. And as long as we dot all the i's and cross all the t's and make sure that each part of the project gets put into, uh, it gets implemented before the final okay and it starts construction. Uh, it really is, we really do need to have it because where, whether, you know, nostalgic, uh, historic nostalgia is wonderful. But this community is never going to be the little community it was when that horrific, ugly, um, uh, auto parts, uh, well, model parts, I guess it was a wrecking yard. We're not going to have a community like that anymore. That Watsonville is gone. So we need to recognize the fact, we have to have more housing for the, not just the people who live here, but also the people who, yes, are going to move into this community. So council, uh, please do your job and get this passed and get onto the next agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anybody else?
Yes, Noriko, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Ms. Mayor.
Hi.
City council members and staff. My name is Noriko Akayama-Ragzak and I'm a resident on Paraiso Court, also known as the Casitas Town Homes in the Seaview Ranch Development. This Friday will mark the two-year anniversary when I experienced the most nerve-wracking city council meeting that I have ever attended. I must be a glutton for punishment since I watched the whole video and relived that insane night. I would be quoting some of the comments made from that meeting throughout my speech. Mr. Greg Caput spoke eloquently on behalf of the Casitas residents to find another alternative route. Negotiate seriously with the private landowner, said our re-elected county supervisor. He added, give this a little more time. Mr. George Owl urged the council to give it one more shot. Everybody up there in Greg Caput has to help out to find a way, he stated. I felt the power shift to our side when I heard those words come from Mr. Owl. At that crazy meeting, the residents were getting the momentum to buy more time to find an alternate route for the Loma Vista Drive Extension. But the developers stood their ground and would not budge on any compromises. About a year after the horrific meeting, I spoke to someone who was on the planning commission and that person said to my face that they wish they would have voted against the development. What does that tell you? California Sunshine Development is here to request a one-year time extension. Is it because the land did not sell when it was placed on the market for fifteen million dollars? Right after the listing posted, I saw that the adjacent property on five thirty-five Aloney Parkway, the private landowner whom Mr. Caput was referring, was for sale at four million dollars. That was our chance to find a miracle. Our prince charming was coming to save us. Please do not give the developer time extension. I quote Lisa Lee from the marathon meeting, any delay will kill the project. According to all the testimony from the developer and architect, the dirt needed to be moved by the end of twenty eighteen or the project doesn't happen. The project dies. In my opinion, two years have gone by and this project is dead and buried. Why prolong the agony? Lowell Hurst said it best in August of two thousand and eighteen. Tonight is when we rip the Band-Aid off this scenario. I believe this request is employed to get the property back on the market so the developer can walk away from adding extra money to the ten million dollars that have already been spent. My recommendation for the council is to move on and keep the integrity of our precious city. You will find a more suitable and trustworthy developer who will listen and work with the loyal citizens of Watsonville. Thank you for your valuable time and good night.
Thank you, Noriko. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the council?
Yes, there is a phone number ending in eight, six, zero. You need to unmute your phone. There you go. Now we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bob Culbertson. And, um, I've been waiting over four hours to give my three minutes of time. So I'll get right into it. Almost two years ago, this project was before the city council. Concerns were raised by the Casitas residents and others that the proposed access route of Loma Vista Drive Extension, we asked for more time to explore other routes involving right of ways on Arrington Road and on the trail slash emergency fire road that goes into Sunshine Garden Project. When the council was told by the developer that any development, any delay would kill the project, the council voted to approve it without further discussion of alternative access. One of my concerns then, as now, is the safe removal of contaminated topsoil from the site. I do not want contaminated soil ending up in the Watsonville slough and contaminating the water and the wildlife. The reason I was given for the any delay will kill the project statement was that a time restraint. statement was that a time restraint on the county permit to move the contaminated soil before the rainy season of 2018, 2019. The topsoil was not removed before the rainy season of 2018, 2019. Nor was it removed before the rainy season of 2019, 2020. Why is a one-year extension of the special use permit expected to allow the project to move forward? Since the hearing in 2018, several things have changed. One, the neighboring parcel of Four Acre has been advertised for sale as suitable subdivision site. This creates an opportunity for right-of-way adjustments on Arrington Road and on the Emergency Access Road through Sunshine Gardens. So again, I suggest that alternative accesses to the Alta Vista Extension be explored. COVID-19, number two, COVID-19 has created enormous impacts around unemployment and economic health. It could be harder to obtain funding for construction and buyers for new homes. If the funding was not there in 2018, why anticipate that it will be there in 2020 or 2021? Three, the current wildlife through, throughout California, but especially Santa Cruz and Monterey County wildfires, put a demand on heavy equipment and dump trucks. It will be harder to arrange for removal of the contaminated topsoil and the base construction of the subdivision infrastructure. Four, since the law requiring any new homes in California to include solar power starting in 2020, these homes will need to be built with solar power, increasing their cost and they need to be slightly redesigned. It seems to me there's, just may not be, this may not be the time to move forward with this particular project. It would be better for the city.
Bob, can you finish your sentence because your time is up?
Okay. I think it'd be better to have it coordinated with a future Four Acre parcel and with the Sunshine Garden Project, which is dead in the water at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any other speakers?
I don't see other speakers. That, that sounds like yourself.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion with a motion. I saw Felipe and then Lowell.
I would like to make the motion and some comments. I know you're going to tell me to make the motion first. I'll make the motion for the two-year extension.
Okay, and then the one year for the other? Because it's, there, there's about the map and then there's the.
Yes.
Okay, and is there a second to that motion? Okay, Felipe made the motion and Lowell seconded. Discussion on this motion and we'll start with Felipe.
You know, I, I think that right now during this time, we're really in a need for housing in our community. It's been mentioned, we haven't had a large-scale project since 2006. And since then, the housing prices have just been going up, you know, and you know, people talk about this pandemic and the issues with the pandemic in Watson, how it's been affected. And I tell people that one of the reasons is the overcrowded housing conditions that we have in Watsonville is one of the main reasons why we have our COVID numbers, why the COVID numbers are so high in Watsonville. And it's the need for housing here in Watsonville. And we're not just dealing with this pandemic here in Watsonville, you know, and we're going to be dealing with this stagnant economy. We're going to be dealing with, you know, the fires that burned down housing stock in not only Santa Cruz County, San Mateo County, Vacaville. I forgot all the other places, Winters area. So I think that that really justifies the two-year extension for this project, if not more, to tell you the truth. Thank you.
Okay, Lowell?
Thank you, Mayor. I too think that the, the two-year extension on the tentative map and the one-year extension on the special use permit is the proper thing to do under these current circumstances where we have. You know, I think it came out pretty clear when we talked about eviction, the harsh reality of housing in this community. And so I will, I will support the motion.
Okay, moving on to Aurelio.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, this is really important steps here we're taking. And I, and I think it's imperative that we really look at this. I know we need housing, but we need the right housing. We need the right developers to create this housing. But we're looking at this, we're looking at a three-year extension for them to get off and try to do something. And it's just like what the speaker said, that all they're doing is setting it up so they could try to sell this property. They're not really interested in developing this property anymore because it's costing already too much money and, and it's going to be hard enough to develop this property. So in reality, we have to look at how they approached us and all the falsehoods they told us of how this project wasn't going to get done if it didn't get approved. So I think it's just more falsehoods and I think we really need to look at this. And like I said, I understand we need housing, but we need the right housing and we need the right developers to create that housing. And I don't think this is the right developer. You know, she separated from the first housing units that they were building, that the, that organization came through. And again, I'll reiterate, there's a crappy housing. They're trying to put housing that says it's $800,000 value for luxury homes when they're nothing but cheap-ass homes. They're probably full of mold by now, but do that, is that the kind of housing that we want for the city of Watsonville? And by the time this housing is completed, you're looking probably at six or eight years down the road. When maybe, maybe if they really truly stay true to their words, that you'll have the first phase completed. But I doubt that very much and I really do doubt that very much. And so when they build the first phase of housing, you know, those houses are going to be out of the reach of a lot of people within this community. So they're not going to be housing for our community. It's going to be more gentification, as they say. And, you know, I understand there has to be a balance. But again, I think this is not the proper developer anymore and I don't think this is the proper development for this project, for this site. And I think we really need to look at it and take a step back and, and we have time. COVID has given us time and I know we need to build housing, but you know, we can also focus on infill downtown. And I know there's a lot of developers, good developers that want to build housing. And, you know, I just cannot support this, cannot support this at all because this has been falsehood after falsehood after falsehood with this developer. And I don't, I don't see him building anything. I see them again just putting a faucet in front of us and saying that they're going to do something. And then all they're really looking at is trying to make profit off the property. So I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, Aurelio. Ari?
I actually have no comments or questions at this time. Okay, Trina?
Um, yes, this particular project is the most complex piece of property that we have left that is of the largest development that we have left within the city limits right now that we can do. There have been a lot of, lot of mis, mis, missteps happen. I believe that we now have somebody that is on board, that is local, that has a lot of the experience that Aurelio, you've got the concerns about that have done successful developments in this community. She is not the developer for the other project. She got it started to get the project and then she, she left and she's moved on. So to, to blame her for the missteps of whatever was going on on that other project for the construction work, I don't think that's the right direction. However, I do agree with.
It's a reflection of where she comes from.
Go ahead, Trina.
I do believe that we do have a lot of things that need to take place and things take longer than we expect them to. We always want to finish things off a lot sooner than what's going on here. And, and I do, I do support the motion because I do know we need housing. We have 58% of our residents that are renters and we continue to perpetuate rentals that we've got out there and of rentals that we have no tax base for. This is an opportunity for housing, for investment in the community that are, that's here and more, more that we're going to receive in terms of the, the general fund off of the tax base that we're going to get for the, the community members that need it to come in and purchase houses here. Sorry, I'm really exhausted and my voice is going. Anyway, I support the motion. We need a project like this going forward. And it has been 14 years since there's been a for-sale sign on a new unit in this community. And now is the time we need to support the developers who put a hell of a lot of money invested in this so far for us to get this project rolling.
Okay, my question goes to either Mr. Fry or Ms. Lee. To what extent, if any, did you interact, communicate with the neighbors around in terms of supporting you for this extension?
Frankly, we, under the circumstances, did not knock on doors and felt that it was probably not a good thing to be exposed to the situation we have here health-wise. And that's something I personally feel disappointed about because I've never done a project that I haven't met with the neighbors and haven't listened to them and tried to accommodate what they have. That doesn't mean I wouldn't do that going forward. I surely would. And I think that there are opportunities that we will be talking to them and we should be talking to them. And as long as I'm involved with this project and having to carry it forward, I promise you that I will.
Okay, and what I'm going to say is I voted no on this project the last time because the developer was unwilling to continue conversations with a neighbor in terms of an alternative route to the Loma Vista Drive. And now I'm asking the question again in terms of neighbors. And again, that, that conversation hasn't taken place. And as you know, lots of conversations are taking place via virtual and not one-to-one. And so that conversation should have taken place. So I will not be supporting this motion either. So with that, it's time for a roll call, unless there's any final comments, questions. Lowell?
Well, thank you again, Mayor. You know, I think Mr. Fry does have a good local track record. He, there's lots of projects that he's moved forward. And so I think, I feel confident that, that there will be dialogue and there will be adjustments and comments. And so I have hope for the future and I hope that this will work out.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Felipe, seconded by Lowell. Let's have roll call.
Councilman Gomez?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
No, motion passes for to, to. Okay, moving on. Let's see.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
We have, we have no emergency items added to the agenda. Now's the time for requests.
Mayor?
Oh, yes?
I'd like to add the emergency item to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Come bring back the reconsideration of the moratorium.
Okay, but that, that could be even a request for scheduling future items.
I'd like to do it tonight.
Oh, you want to, you want to, okay, so Matt, you have to.
Under the emergency item.
Yeah. Matt, you have to clarify. Matt, you have to clarify for me in terms of emergency items, how they work.
Yeah, so this might actually be a better question for the city attorney, but it is my understanding that a council member can make a motion to reconsider a vote the same night as that item has already been heard. It requires a second and it is also subject to debate by the council. I don't know if Alan has anything he wants to add to that.
That's correct. It must be made soon thereafter. It was by Lowell. He asked about it and then it was delayed because in the middle of a hearing, requires a second and is debatable.
Okay, so Aurelio, Aurelio made the motion on this emergency item for, to reconsider the moratorium, eviction moratorium. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Felipe seconded. Okay, so let's have some discussion and we'll start. Let's see, I think it's time to go with Lowell.
Well, thank you, thank you again, Mayor. You know, I realized I did make an error when I failed to take advantage of Aurelio's timeline adjustment. And so I'm, I'm ready to support Aurelio's motion or whoever made that motion.
Yeah, it was Aurelio who made the motion to consider the eviction moratorium. Okay, okay, next is Aurelio.
Yeah, I want to make sure that everybody understands what the motion was because it was an amendment to the motion. And the amendment was that we were going to put a timeline of January 15th on it and then.
That failed, but, but that's not the motion, that's not the motion now.
But that's the motion I'll be making.
Okay, well.
I understand that that's the motion that failed, but because Councilman, Councilman Hurst wants to relook at that part of it, of the timeline.
Okay, so why don't we go back?
Clarify that that.
You said the 30th.
I said the 30th, but I, Ari Parker made the, the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the one you originally.
Let's stop. Let's stop, let's stop. Beatrice needs to say something first.
So the motion right now is to add the item as an emergency item. And if that passes, then you can go to, make motion, the motion to consider the moratorium. Right now it's just to add it.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so the motion on the floor is to add the eviction moratorium as an emergency item. And Matt?
I'm going to refer to the city attorney because I, I think it's a slightly different process. Like Alan.
There was a motion that failed.
Right.
This is a motion to reconsider that motion. It's bringing that motion back, the one that failed.
Oh, okay.
Not an emergency, the first one was emergency type. You're just reconsidering a vote that failed. And if this vote fails, you can make another motion until you get to a solution, if you do.
Okay.
So the last motion that failed would be, is up for consideration. You can amend it and get to a vote.
Okay, so the motion that failed was to have an emergency eviction moratorium was the motion that failed. And so, all right, let's see, again, Aurelio, you're bringing that motion back. And Lowell, you, you seconded, is that correct? Oh, Felipe, Felipe said, said, okay, so we've got a motion on the floor. And so in terms of how we're going to address this, I have to go back to my names. Oh, because Aurelio made the motion, he gets to speak on the motion first.
Okay, so I guess can, can I restructure the motion?
Mayor?
Amend it.
Mayor and council, I want to be very clear. So there's a motion on the floor that the council needs to have a roll call vote to bring the item back to then take action on. That is what the council is taking action on first. So we need to get that motion out of the way and make sure that the council is supportive of reconsidering the item. And then a motion could be made that, as to whether or not you want to approve it going forward.
Okay, because I had misunderstood then Alan because I thought he had described something different. So right now, what we're considering is just to bring this back as an emergency item. Is that correct?
No, no, we're not bringing it back as emergency item. We're bringing it back for your reconsideration.
Well, that's different than what Matt just said.
I don't think so.
Okay, repeat again, Matt, then what we're considering.
You are considering whether to bring the item back for reconsideration.
Well, see, that's different than what Matt's, than what Alan said.
Can I, can I just clarify this? Can I, can I just make a motion to reconsider the prior?
Okay, okay, okay. Where the motion is to reconsider the eviction moratorium. It was seconded, are you seconding it, Felipe?
Yes.
Okay, it's been seconded. Okay, now in terms. Okay, it's been seconded. Okay, now, in terms of, uh, discussing it because, uh, uh, Aurelio made the motion, he gets to speak first.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to bring the question on, on that original motion so we can talk about, uh,
Okay, uh, then we'll move on now to Ari.
Uh, I support reconsideration of this motion.
Very good. Trina?
I, I need clarity of this motion about it being discussed after eleven o'clock tonight when we don't have anybody else that has been involved in this beforehand. I don't know if that's the case of it, yes, bring it back, but I'm not gonna be here tonight, um, continuing this. I will let you know that now because I am exhausted and I'm about, I, 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 I'm tapped out. So there's nothing else I'm gonna vote on. If you're having me vote to bring this back at another time where the public could then weigh in on what's going on when they heard that this was, is everybody's tuned out on what the result is on this. So now we're gonna bring it back after everybody's left to know the circumstance. Tonight, I will not take another vote on this particular measure. I will, uh, support bringing it back so it's a public process. So if the motion is specifically to bring it back, yes. But if you're asking me to do and discuss this tonight, my vote is no. So let's clarify exactly what I'm voting on to know whether you've got my attention for the rest of the evening or not.
Okay, next.
No comment.
No comment. Lowell?
I, I'm glad to reconsider.
Okay, and I, I'm, uh, ready to act on the motion. So unless, yes?
Uh, Councilman Kaufman Gomez. The public was here and the public commented on it. I know that you got interrupted, but anybody who wanted to talk about it, yea or nay, was, was here to talk about it earlier. And so I feel like they, everybody was fully represented that wanted to be. So I don't think we're trying to put one over by reconsidering it at the end of the meeting. It might be a rude awakening for some, but I'm, I'm, I'm just saying everybody who wanted, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying from the perspective who wanted to be represented was represented and allowed to speak on both sides of the issue until there was nobody else left to.
So I. So we have a motion on the floor. Uh, Trina, uh, Trina, you wanna make a final comment?
My final comment is that when people left, knowing that that's how the vote was going to take, what's gonna stop us from, when we don't like a vote to bring it back again after everything is all said and done with again for anything else that nobody's satisfied with? That does not make sense to bring this without the public knowing, even if it's an emergency item, schedule a time for it so the public is aware, this is being rebrought back to the council for us to do this. We already voted on this. If it was voted down, it was voted down. If it was voted up, do you want me to bring this back saying I want this back on the table for us to re-vote again? That does not make sense when it comes to the transparency to the public in the process. Not that I'm saying yes or no, but to the process isn't, isn't transparent to the public.
Uh, yes, Ari?
In, in the, in the realm of that, I mean, I don't know. Can we put this on our next agenda? Because I don't see that it's gonna change the outcome.
Well, what we have to do is where there's a motion on the floor right now.
I'm talking, I'm just talking to, to the council. And I can't do it anywhere else about this, so I'm talking to them now. And so, uh, it's discussion, uh, Madam Mayor. I'm just trying to discuss it. You can hear my voice. I taught all day, so I don't have much left either. But, uh, I, I do have to say that, um, I am a big believer in transparency. And, and I think you all understand where I stand on this, so that's not gonna change. And I don't believe it's going to harm one way or the other, but I do believe in a positive way and transparency. If we put it on the next agenda, then then it will allow the utmost of transparency.
Uh, okay, Aurelio?
Madam Mayor, thank you. You know, um, for somebody that was gonna leave the meeting and couldn't hang in there, uh, this, the timeline has really exceeded. You know, the thing we're really looking at here is the reconsideration. Some folks, some council folks did not agree with the time that was gonna be put on the January fifteenth, the amendment that Ari Parker, Councilman Ari Parker made that was voted down. And I think some of the councilmen have reflected back on that and may come with an agreement, uh, and, and, and meet us on that. Uh, and so that's what's really the vote's about. Uh, I think everybody, every councilman, maybe every councilman was gonna support the, the moratorium. Uh, but, you know, I just wanna move this forward. Uh, I think it's a timeline thing. If we, if we move it and we push it till next month, that means it's not gonna take effect until after this month. For those of folks that can't, uh, pay their rent, it's coming up this month, it's gonna affect them. So I, I think it's, it's more critical to take care of our community than to be, uh, worried about a timeline.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to reconsider, uh, the eviction moratorium motion that failed before. And so I'll go ahead and have a roll call on that.
Kaufman Gomez? No. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Ari?
I'm, I'm, I'm here.
Yes or no?
Um. I'm having a difficult time with the transparency issue. I don't think it's gonna change the outcome. But I do think that, that the transparency of how we do this rather than but I don't wanna see people harmed, but I do wanna see there a ba- a balance in the community. Because, you know, everybody lives in this community, renters and landlords. I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, uh, motion passes. So now you can make another motion. Uh, Aurelio, if you'd like to, in regards to the eviction, uh, moratorium.
I'd like to bring the motion, uh, back to, uh, to the, uh, moratorium with, uh, the amendment that was added of a timeline of January fifteenth.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Felipe is second, so it's Aurelio with Felipe. Uh, uh, in terms of discussion, um, it's time for Lowell to go first.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. I think I've seen the error of my ways and, you know, I don't make a whole lot of mistakes, but wherever once in a while I do. And so I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote yes.
Okay, Aurelio?
I've just asked a question.
Okay, Ari?
Yes.
Uh, okay, uh, Trina?
No.
Oh, oh, and, and this, we're not voting yet. We're just, okay, uh, Felipe?
Yes.
And, and, uh, did I already ask you Lowell? Yeah, I did already. So it's me. So we have a motion on the floor. Uh, any final comments, questions? So the motion is that we have the eviction moratorium until, uh, January the fifteenth. Is that correct? Okay, let's take a roll call.
Kaufman Gomez? No. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes, motion passes. So we have an eviction moratorium. Very good. With that, we'll continue and, uh, the next is to, uh, future scheduled, uh, meeting requests. Any meeting requests? Uh, Trina?
Whether it's a meeting request or not, the process of us discussing the items on the agenda need to be brought as the full council process. We have the presentation, we have the clarifying questions, we go to the audience, we get their comments. And when it comes back to us, we're making premature motions without having conversation with council. I don't think it's productive. It isn't, it isn't what we've done in the past that has worked well. And I think it's creating more confusion over, over what we're actually, um, voting on. And whether that needs to be agendized or whether we can discuss it as a body of council without having to be part of the agenda. We need to have that rectified because it's creating a lot of confusion and chaos. I believe that we can work more collectively as a body to put together motions so that we're all hearing each other out and, and collectively making these motions and these, uh, decisions. So I wanna make sure that this is brought back for discussion amongst council on the method of which we're communicating and voting and, um, putting policy together.
Matt, did you hear that?
Loud and clear.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, future, uh, agenda items request? Okay, hearing done, I adjourn at eleven twenty. Good night, everybody.
I, I have to agree with that first public comment. I think it might have been Steve. We did have too much items on the agenda.
No, it's not just we did, it was, it was massive.
It's, it's the method here with our electronic version too.
Yeah, let's try not to do that next time. That was awful.